Good morning, welcome Commissioners Court, Monday, July fourteenth. We have a full court in present case certified meeting was properly posted. Please rise for prayer and pledge this man's drink.
I bow before you this morning. And thanking you for the presence that you are in this courtroom. Father, may you guide these gentlemen in the direction that you would have us have them go. For the residents of Walker County. Father, may your will be done in Commissioners Court this morning. Father, we ask Lord that you lead us and guide us through this day and be ever on our minds. And that we always look to you for guidance. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God and to his people with liberty and justice. I pledge allegiance to the patriots who stand under God, one and in the mission.
Receive any public comments, anybody getting? Consent agenda contains thirteen items, need to pull number thirteen.
Motion accept consent agenda to pull another third.
I'll second that.
Move in same bill, if they raise your hand, motion carries number thirteen. Pro facility request twenty twenty-five dash seventy-three allowing Walker County Chamber of Commerce to use annex parking lot fair on the square Friday, October third through Sunday, October fifth. I went and met with Jason at the new chamber. Um, they are not moving in early, they'll move in Friday at five o'clock, so we shouldn't be any problems with our offices staying open. They will move in a dumpster and porter cans along the far parking lot on the south side. And we're gonna, they may bring in some tents and stuff for that extra overflow parking lot that we have behind the insurance area. But all contact will flow through our office and their office, nobody from a committee, it all go through Ally and Jason, so we were all on the same page.
We need to, uh, employees not fucking that spare parking lot.
They'll work around, but most of them don't, we keep our heat over there.
Is this where they gonna serve alcohol on our property?
That's later to come, but yes.
I'm gonna have to vote against it.
Okay. Any other? Nope. Alright, I'll move to approve number thirteen. Moving same bill, if they raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna deviate real fast and we're gonna go in the budget for just a second to let Judge Mormon talk to court, so he can get to court. Judge Mormon, you're online?
I am, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all so much, I appreciate y'all letting me go out of order. Um, we have an interlocal agreement, uh, that Grimes County had requested setting forth, and so we've done that, I think, the last two or three years. Uh, but I've asked for some additional funding in the this year's budget. One of the things we talked about y'all before was, uh, some software, uh, for tech share software, which is basically to handle uh, all the indigent appointment of council from the appointment to the payment of vouchers and then also for the auditor then to, uh, send in their report each year. So that we can show how we spent the money. Uh, uh, it's gonna make it easier for the auditor, they've been having to go through all those fee vouchers page by page and then created a uh, a spreadsheet and then create the report. This software comes from the indigent commission, so once we enter all that data in there, it'll make sure that it goes to them and we won't have any problems being in compliance with our grant to get that money. Um, we're also gonna take in and add e-court date, uh, which will work with, um, Odyssey. And so every, once we get that implemented this year, all the folks that have court dates will get a text or an email reminding them, uh, about court and that should eliminate folks missing. I know it won't eliminate all, there's just some folks just aren't gonna make it, um, but it will make it where, uh, they don't really have an excuse for not getting it because they'll get a text about a week out and then like three days before and then the day before reminded them about court, it'll also make it easier in case we have something where, uh, we have no power at the courthouse or things of that nature that we could send a message out to everybody. So, uh, that leads into, uh, I've asked for an increase for salaries. Um, I know that y'all may be considering a cost of living adjustment, but my staff, uh, is going to, uh, Ms. Schweitzer, Ms. Fuentes are gonna be the ones responsible for implementing and training everybody on this software. We're gonna use this software in Walker and Madison Counties, uh, Grimes County, I don't know that their software is, um, they don't use Odyssey. Uh, I don't know that theirs is gonna be, uh, compatible with the e-court date, but we are gonna use the tech share in all three of these counties. And so Ms. White or Ms. Fuentes will be responsible for training everybody, uh, using that, that includes the jail staff because, uh, when the folks are magistrated, they'll have to input that data into the software, uh, about whether or not they qualify for being indigent. That'll also be the auditors, the JPs and all the defense attorneys. So every time we add a new defense attorney to the, uh, appointment list or we have somebody new change over at the jail, uh, and that's at all three counties. So part of the interlocal agreement is that pay raise would be split amongst all three counties. So Walker County is only gonna be paying, uh, it's a little over sixty percent, Ms. Ms. Patricia will correct me about the exact percentage because it changes every year, but that's why we're asking for that, uh, because basically, um, they're gonna have a lot more time in this as far as, um, outside of what their roles have been in the past to train folks. Uh, and it's gonna be split amongst the three counties. And then I'm asking for, uh, increase in my supplement, I think y'all are probably aware that all the judges are asking and probably Mr. Uh, Durham is now that the state's raised that we can actually get a raise, um, which we hadn't been able to participate in any of the cost of livings y'all done the last two or three years because we were capped out. That's kind of the high points and if y'all have got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Not at this time, Judge.
And if you do, you can, you can track me down, it's just Mondays, I've, I've made the mistake of following my predecessor's calendar and so all my dockets are all on Mondays, so I appreciate y'all letting me go out of order and take care of this so I can, uh, get to the courtroom.
Thank you, Judge.
Alright, thank y'all very much.
And we'll go back on the schedule at fourteen, discuss and take action on waiving the ninety day health insurance waiting period for Assistant Chief of EMS position. Rachel online?
Yes. Yes, I am. Hello.
Yeah.
So I wanted to, morning. So I wanted to ask, this was, um, something that you guys were able to do for me when I came on board as well as our previous assistant chief, um, was waiving the ninety day waiting period for, um, our health insurance. Um, this came up in kind of negotiations, um, and within the last couple of weeks. Um, so I didn't know if this would be something that you guys would entertain doing for our applicants, uh, especially if we have an external applicant.
Do we do it for anybody else?
This would be the, yes, we've done it twice before.
Yeah, I mean, we've done.
For Rachel herself and she came on board and then previous district chief came on board, we did both of those. Um, we, we, those just, it's, I look at it as, uh, it's an upper level management position that you negotiate to get them here and it's something that this person has requested and if we can do it. He doesn't have the, he can come and if not, it may be something that takes him out of the running, so I don't know who the person is, I have no idea. Um, but like I said, I think it's, and I made the same comment before, when you get out of, um, entry level to mid positions and you start bringing in either department appointees or whatever like that. You were competing against other departments, not departments, but other entities or whatever, so it's a basic, I think, a pretty low risk thing to bring on board a quality applicant.
I don't really have an issue with it on the upper level either because I mean, you're gonna lose a lot of applicants that you might would hire if you didn't, you know, if you don't do it, then you, you're kind of stuck, I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
I disagree, I, I, I would.
I think we disagreed last time.
Yeah, yeah, I was important in the beginning and I'm still not, so at least you know where I'm at, right?
Hey, I remember now, you give me the same speech.
We treat them all the same or don't treat them one.
I'm with Danny on that, so.
Well, it's gonna hinge on you down there, brother. You know where the rest of the courts at.
I don't say anything and make a motion.
So I got, uh, I guess two questions, number one, do you already have somebody in the interview application, is it something that they've asked for?
Yes, so.
To blanketize.
So we did have an applicant, this was something they asked for, um, which is why I put it on the agenda, um, however, that applicant made me aware Thursday, Friday, that they were rescinding their, their acceptance, I guess, pending this, um, there were a few other things that we weren't able to do for this applicant, however, it was one of the first things that they asked for, um, and I know there's not a waiting period at a lot of our a lot of the other departments surrounding us, um, so I figured I wouldn't pull it, I would ask for, you know, we're gonna open the job back up, um, that way if it comes up again, it is something we can offer if they, if they ask for it.
So I wasn't clear that the applicant that wanted this is pulled back and is not, is not, uh, gonna take the accept position anyways?
Correct, yeah, there were, there were some other things that weren't really doable, um, so they kind of they, they pulled their acceptance from, from the position, so.
Okay.
And the ninety day health insurance waiting period, is that internal? That's ours?
Yeah, that's ours. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a tool to have in your bag and, and like I said, I didn't know the person had, it's brown either until right now. And, um, it's a good tool to have in your bag, but you can't offer it if you don't know that you can bring it. You know, if you're close on the dollars and we're always in that position of being lower tier pay, especially on the upper positions, to offer our benefits is one thing that sells us and to in today's world especially, ask a person to go ninety days without medical and most of these people are in their forties or fifties, whatever. It's something that might might, might sway a decision to bring them here, so.
So it looks like it hinges on me, let me ask you another.
Right in the center.
Yeah, let me.
Everybody else is firm.
If, uh, you're gonna open this back up, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if we give you approval today is, I would make, I would not make that offer, I would make that, uh, next person to apply, make you, make them ask you for that.
Oh, yeah, no, that was, that was not gonna be something that we offered right off the bat, if it, if it came down to it, um, kind of like this was one of the things the person asked for later on in discussions with taking the job. So I put it on the agenda, but it, it wasn't anything that I offered right off the bat, so, um.
Okay. Alright, I make the motion to approve item fourteen.
I'll second. Move in same bill, if they raise your hand. All opposed?
Same vote last time.
Thank you.
Fifteen, discuss and take action on increasing jail mechanic from market salary to salary of previous jail mechanic.
John, we're gonna get you an assigned seat. Been coming to. Don't give him a seat, we don't want him up there that much.
Try. The jail mechanic, uh, I'm asking for, uh, the pay, his pay to be matched to the last jail mechanic, uh, it would be an increase twenty seven fifty-four. And the reason I'm asking for this is because it's a thirty year mechanic, he owned his own shop. He basically closed it down and, uh, he knows a lot about cars, I've spoken with him in depth about purchasing parts, using different, uh, auto mechanic, things like this to save which, uh, thank everybody at the sheriff's office that's over on their car. But I think he can do a good job and I think that he can save us money.
You know he can save us money.
Oh, yeah.
I figured you'd come around.
What are you trying to bring him in at?
Uh, fifty-three, seven eighty-five.
That's with this twenty-seven fifty-four?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we, we, we always had a jail mechanic slaughtered, did y'all create this or it's kind of getting created?
Well, I, I remember.
The last one was a jailer, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, uh, I think we've had one forever and it, it really should be named patrol mechanic because he does more for patrol than he does us, but, uh, this man is very organized. He's done a few things already that have, uh, really impressed me as far as the shop goes and, uh, that's the stuff. I like to keep.
So are you looking at moving him to another classification number or just?
No, sir, it's just that, that, uh, increase in the same pay group, uh, twenty-seven fifty-four.
Alright, so does that, where does that put him on our entry market max, is he above, is he above market with that?
He would be above market by twenty-seven fifty-four.
Oh, by twenty-seven fifty-four, so this is just to, to put him up above that?
Yeah.
Yeah, because when they hired the other one in, he dropped balls back to market. So.
Well, the other one, was he classified as a jailer or was he classified?
He, he was a jail mechanic, but he was a jail.
Okay, so I mean, basically, I mean, he was, he was on paper as a jailer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's, there's our difference there, we need to look at doing whatever, which I don't have a problem if it holds on a mechanic, it saves you the money that.
Talking about re-classed.
Yeah, just kind of raise that position up to, you know, I mean, I don't, when we did the, uh, study, I mean, I don't know how they come up with that on a number for a true mechanic anyway. Cause I know what they charge, if you go to the shop, you'll figure that out.
Yeah.
That's, that's a cheap number, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that number that you put, what was it, in twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven fifty-four.
Twenty-seven fifty-four.
Let's finish this.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I got a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand.
I do.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, John.
Sixteen, discuss and take action on the purchase and upfitting of twenty twenty-five Tahoe in the amount of seventy-two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. Dean?
Constable?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
You asking for money or you already got this, Constable?
It, I, I put it in my budget, it's, I'm asking for it in this year's budget. Uh, the reason I'm here is because the car is here, we did a letter of intent in March of last year. Uh, that's what they told us, we're gonna own a Tahos and yada, yada, yada. Uh, the car's here early, uh, and if we purchase it now, it saves some money, I don't know how much, but by way to October, they've got, they'll start getting charged their, uh, inventory tax. So.
So how are we gonna do this, Patricia?
I'd say fund it out of project contingency this year and then we'll just remove that from supplemental request, yeah.
You good with that?
Good with that.
That's my motion.
Hold on, hold on one time, uh, your numbers ain't matching, Gene, y'all a bit. You got a grand total here of seventy-one seventeen and then this other one is seventy-two forty-two.
Are you talking about the budget request?
I'm assuming, I don't know, it's what you got in back up here. Yeah, you wanna look it?
The latest, uh, whatever y'all got from, from, uh, Ally is the correct number, uh, he going through, uh,
What's on the agenda, the seventy-two number for twenty?
Seventy-two numbers.
That's what you need.
That's what we got.
You got fitting also, Jane?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright. That was good.
That's all.
My motion to approve seventy-two four twelve. Constable Cole.
Uh, I get like a public pack for reducing that year.
No. I got a, I got a motion in a second. I got a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries seventeen, discuss and take action on the purchase of three office chairs in the amount of nine hundred and ninety dollars for precinct four. That was some of the stuff to, to prove, yeah.
I make motion to approve agenda item seventeen.
Moved and segmented all in favor, raise your hand. Eighteen, discuss and take action for approved the joint election agreement, including attachment. As countywide poll location for November fourth, twenty twenty-five special election.
One, one, two.
Before each election, November, basically, we have checking with, they may or may not all hold an election, we all know, it just depends on if they have opposition for the candidates. Um, the only other part of this that we are, uh, are putting today is attachment A, which are the whole locations. Um, attachment B, which are election, well, because we definitely have to be updated because the councilists still have the summer pretty much to get us names to nominate, and then you can appoint them when we come back to court.
I didn't see any changes on.
The whole, the places will be open. Hours are listed in there for this election as well. With, uh, early voting starting October the twentieth through October thirty-first.
So Diana, did they jack us around in legislature about this, I know there was some talk. Have you heard anything yet?
Provided countywide.
Yeah, okay.
But there is legislation that is going to affect us this next year, it won't be this election. We all kind of got together to put it off from this November election to next year, the SOS now has as fast as they can put it together to make these changes where all two hundred and fifty-four counties can have a successful election. So we're all preparing for next November to be the big change. It's coming. One of the big changes.
That was good.
I make the motion to approve agenda item eighteen as presented.
Sure. Moving segment on, favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, Diana.
Motion carries.
Um, they all approved us to, uh, we were hosting the Secretary of State's office last week, filter, and I just wanted to report back, it was a great success, we had over sixteen counties join us over fifty in attendance and, uh, they really, really appreciated Walker County and us being able to provide the breakfast for them and we had a really good working, uh, regional training, so I just wanted to thank y'all for that.
Thank you, Diana.
Number nineteen, discuss and take action on acceptance of Texas Veterans Commission Notice of Grant Agreement on IDR twenty twenty-four dash two zero one eight zero zero five nine eight one housing for Texas heroes of Mount awarded seven, seventy thousand. Mr. Kane?
One more.
Those about it?
France, uh, going to allow for five veterans here in Walker County who need repairs to their home due to storm damage or modifications to physical capabilities as they get older or amputees, you know, that sort of thing. And weatherization, if we have, I have one veteran who basically lost their roof last year while we had the rains and that burl and we didn't have the funds with the Seth funds at that time to get it replaced, so, uh, they've been putting tarps on it, they have one of my first ones, I've got we're getting touched with to get this going, there's a title process, they gotta go through the checklist, uh, before and after photos. Contracts, we gotta have three, at least three bids before we even approve it, you know. All go in front of the Commissioners Court for each project.
Bob, are we gonna front the money for this to begin with or they gonna send you?
This is reimbursable grant.
Will everything flow through purchasing?
I'll get with, yes.
Okay.
And I'll get with you and Amy.
Okay.
There is a reporting process that I have to do also in their flux system.
Okay.
I move to approve number nineteen. Move in segment all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, Bob, thank you, Bob.
Motion carries. Twenty, discuss and take action on replacing vent hood fans at Senior Center.
Daisy? Good morning.
Morning.
Well, I sent you the documents, but we, our vent hoods don't work, there's one working. Work on the outside exhaust and two work with the air suppression, I mean, uh, fire suppressions, so right now, if the last one goes down, we're in a lot of trouble, so we're asking, I think, from my understanding is that this would fall under Commissioners Court for y'all because it's your building. But we are willing to have it with you, we, if that's workable for you, it's cheaper if we replace all four at one time because it takes a crane to put them in, so if we do a couple at a time, we have to have a crane every single time, and that crane, that I think is like over eight thousand dollars, so um, anyway, that's what we're asking for, it's, one, the fire suppression is gonna make a mess if that happens, but also it's very, very warm, so we're working against our air conditioning and everything as we go along, it's been a, a mess probably for a while, like I've never been on the roof, but, um, when they took the pictures, they could see where things have been put in there to try to keep things running, um, again, I, I, there is a limit to what I will do if I didn't climb up on the roof, so we do have pictures.
I'm with you, I'm not going up.
So you sent some stuff?
Yeah, I didn't get any backup.
I didn't get.
Yeah, I didn't come through. Um, I sent it all to, um, Judge Christian's office.
Yeah, I haven't seen any, or what?
Exhaust fans for the kitchen?
Oh, I'm.
We didn't get anything.
Um, so I was flagged, the, the county wouldn't let me, it wouldn't let it come to y'all, so, so y'all haven't seen it. There's two bids, one is like twenty-three thousand, if they're gonna take the taxes out of that, so we're tax exempt, um, from Lone Star AC, which is Tommy McMillan, the other one came in at forty-six thousand and it's Gensel and I don't know them and we're still waiting on a handful AC to get, but we've been waiting for them for three weeks, so, but not a lot of AC places here won't, won't do this work, so what was your question?
These, these are the hoods, the, the exhaust fans.
Yes, on the long, on the, on the roof. And Larry can probably share more, like he's obviously been here a long time, he knows more, he may have even been on the roof, I don't know, but I have not, so.
Um, so according to the, the, the way I understand the agreement between us and the senior center, this is one of the special types of equipment. Yes, it's attached to the building, but it's only, it's only there because the kitchen exists. But, uh, it's the exhaust ports and booster fans on the roof to pull this kitchen fumes out of the building. And yes, because, because these fans are down, um, are not working as well as they should, the kitchen does heat up. Uh, there, there is an air conditioner in there, it does operate, but circulation doesn't.
I move to approve number nineteen. We can second it all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. Good luck.
Twenty, discuss and take action on replacing vent hood fans at senior center.
Amazing.
Good morning. Well, I sent you the documents. Our vent hoods don't work. There's one working. Work on the outside exhaust and two work with the air suppression, I mean, uh, fire suppressions. So right now, if the last one goes down, we're in a lot of trouble. So we're asking, I think my understanding is that this would fall under commissioner's court for y'all because it's your building. But we are willing to half it with you. We, if that's workable for you, it's cheaper if we replace all four at one time because it takes a crane to put them in. So if we do a couple at a time, we have to have a crane every single time. And that crane, that I think is like over eight thousand dollars. So um, anyway, that's what we're asking for. It's, one, the fire suppression is gonna make a mess if that happens, but also it's very, very warm. So we're working against our air conditioning and everything as we go along. It's been a, a mess probably for a while. Like I've never been on the roof, but, um, when they took the pictures, they could see where things have been put in there to try to keep things running. Um, again, I, I, there is a limit to what I will do if I didn't climb up on the roof. So we do have pictures.
I'm with you. I'm not going up.
So you send some stuff?
Yeah, I didn't get any backup.
I didn't get.
Yeah, I didn't come through. Um, I sent it all to, um, Judge Christian's office.
Yeah, I hadn't seen any, or what?
Exhaust fans for the kitchen?
Oh, I'm.
We didn't get anything.
Um, so I was flagged. The, the county wouldn't let me, it wouldn't let it come to y'all. So, so y'all haven't seen it. There's two bids. One is like twenty three thousand. If they're gonna take the taxes out of that, we're tax exempt. Um, from Lone Star AC, which is Tommy McMillan. The other one came in at forty six thousand and it's Gensel and I don't know them. And we're still waiting on a handful AC to get, but we've been waiting for them for three weeks. So, but not a lot of AC places here won't, won't do this work. So what was your question?
Th- these are the hoods, the, the exhaust fans.
Yes, on the long, on the, upon the roof. And Larry can probably share more. Like he's obviously been here a long time. He knows more. He may have even been on the roof. I don't know, but I have not. So.
Um, so according to the, the, the way I understand the agreement between us and the senior center, this is one of the special types of equipment. Yes, it's attached to the building, but it's only, it's only there because the kitchen exists. But, uh, it's the exhaust ports and booster fans on the roof to pull this kitchen fumes out of the building. And yes, because, because these fans are down, um, are not working as well as they should. Kitchen does heat up. Uh, there, there is an air conditioner in there. It does operate, but circulation doesn't work like it's supposed to. So it doesn't keep the room cool.
Yeah, I think we need to participate in it anyway.
Nathan and I have exhausted ourselves on those existing fans.
It's time, it's time to do something.
So your total cost is, that you're looking at the twenty three minus taxes?
Yes, it's gonna be right at twenty.
Right at twenty. So from us, you want how much? Ten from us?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion to allocate ten thousand dollars towards replacing vent hood fans at the seniors.
Moving, same in favor.
I work for you, Stacey.
You very much.
Thank you, Stacey.
Twenty one, discuss and take action on updating schedule rate and contract for child welfare board of Walker County. If any of Miss Stout, you wanna come up with her, Miss Stout?
Yeah, someone else.
Probably not, but yeah.
Morning, Luke.
Yeah, so, so we, we did have a new CPS board. We have chairman, president, I don't know what it, and treasurer for the CPS board. So they're gonna talk a little bit about the base schedule and then the contract. I'll tell the contract.
So pretty much the last, um, schedule rate with the county was updated in two thousand eight. So since then, of course, rates have gone up on clothing, um, gas, um, supplies, just everything, cost of living has gone up. So we're just looking to, um, increase those, uh, two. You go old one, you have the old one. No, it's okay.
Yeah, it's a second page.
So this was the old rate, which is emergency clothing, a hundred dollars. Um, clothing for zero to eleven year olds, ninety dollars per quarter, twelve to eighteen year olds, a hundred and thirty per quarter. Um, babysitting fee was up to fifty dollars per month. Um, then fifteen dollars an hour for foster parent meetings, ten dollars per month for uh, specific foster care, uh, babysitting needs. And then their allowance for the thirteen year olds and older was forty dollars per month. So if you go to the new one. Um, and that was in two thousand eight. We're just looking to update that a little bit, um, for the emergency clothing, uh, to one forty five. Um, we wanna combine clothing for the zero, the seventeen year olds, a hundred and fifty per quarter. Um, the babysitting fee up to fifty dollars per month. Uh, the babysitting for foster meetings, fifteen, we just left there fifteen dollars per month. Um, same thing with the other one. And then the allowance, we bumped it up to seventy five dollars a month.
Explain to me how this process works. Get in that needs help and comes through y'all's board. How, how do you get in this money?
Okay, so we have, uh, two allocated funds, ones from the county and then ones for ours. Uh, money's been raised, um, or has been donated. And so if the child comes into the system, um, their, their caregiver will submit a request to the, um,
The state.
The case worker, they verify, they have to have receipts. Um, so the case worker will double check everything and then they'll submit it to us to approve and then we'll put the number in and the checks will be given out.
So y'all cut the check to the caregiver?
Well, if they're in this, um, scheduled rate, uh, the county does.
Right now.
Right now. We do. So there's another two weeks. That's the part of the contract for next.
So under this new contract, we'll actually cut the checks.
Yeah, yeah. So my suggestion on the new contract is we have it where we cut the checks, the auditor goes back and checks it again. And then we have to bring it to court, approve the
Yeah.
checks and it adds on the time. The other contract, I took Boys and Girls Club, all the other contracts that we have and wrote it the same way where we give them the twenty three thousand eight hundred dollars and let them cut the checks the day they approve it and get it to the kid. Trying to speed that up.
That works much better.
They, they run through the state, they get background checks. They're the only co- organization that we approve here and they get a state background check. I think this is smoother and speeds up the way to help the kids. So that, my suggestion is to do the backup contract that we have and fully fund it for the year, starting October one. We're gonna work the system how we have it now until October one. And then they'll have a full year's worth of money to.
Yeah, and then basically do like all the rest of them, give their financial.
Right. At the end of the year, they turn in the financials and send us a bill for the money and we, we prove it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just to clarify, uh, Brandon, your answer, the, uh, all the expense checks go to the foster parents. The, uh, child allowance, the check is written to the child.
Okay.
Elaborate a little more on that, on the allowance. So what, we just?
Yeah, um, they're, uh, it's only for the thirteen and older kids. So that would be like if they wanna buy if they're at the gas, you know, station with their friends and they wanna buy a soda, they'll have that money for them, you know, and they're not bothering their foster parents.
It also helps if they're in band or football or any of those things. It helps pay those fees.
And CPS watches all that. Montgomery County is wanting to, well, credit card so they can watch it. So we're gonna, at some point, we'll look at that. We don't have the technology here to go to that. But as soon as CPS caseworker sees a problem, they, they stop it.
Right. And one of the, the things we've seen over the last couple of years, the parents aren't asking for the request, which of course is their choice, whether or not they wanna be reimbursed. But the allowances for the children have not been paid for a long time.
We just recently, cause I just cut the checks last, about two weeks ago, we cut checks for April, May and June. For four kids, I believe.
And that came out of our funds.
And that came out of our funds. And they actually went to the caregiver in this case because it was so old. So they said, they submitted some more last week, the first thing we were here. And I realized it was a duplicate. So I cut, sent all those back. So, and I did ask the question today, is this being written to the parent or, or to the guardian or to the child? Right now, we've done it to the guardian because I think they were so far back.
Right. Yeah, um, it was intended, uh, in the original contract that it go to the child. And then of course, as they indicated that all of this flows through the caseworker. Caseworker approves, so to make sure the child is still in foster care. And then, uh, but the checks were theoretically being written to the child when we got the request. We just didn't get the request.
And I want to thank y'all for stepping into that world. I know, and I know it has some challenges when you, when you.
They started from scratch.
Well, I thank y'all for that. I'll make the motion to approve agenda item number, um, twenty one, authorizing increased rate.
With the new contract.
And new contract. And new contract.
Right. It's right.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion case. Thank y'all.
Okay, all right. Yeah, what's your last name? Ari. A, G, A, thank you.
Thank you. Twenty two, discuss and take action on the purchase and payment of concrete box cover for precinct three in the amount of twenty six thousand ten dollars for project to begin in August using budgeted funds.
Morning, Cheryl.
So this is precinct three? Project going on?
Yeah, we are, um, as part of the Highlands Bridge Replacement Project that Tech Todd, that Tech Todd furnished that nine, or furnished that nine hundred thousand dollar bridge for us. Our, um, project replacement was to replace some concrete, some culverts on Wood Farm Road. And, um, it's a big, I think, I think these are five by five culverts that are going in there. Uh, one of them was an old tin horn that rusted out. So we're just gonna replace them with the concrete and be done with them. My motion is to approve agenda item number twenty two.
Is that your, uh, match for the?
Right, right, yeah.
Second.
Moving, second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion case. Twenty three, discuss, take action on purchase and payment of aluminum stock bumper pool trailer for sheriff's office in about twelve thousand two hundred dollars using project contingency bonds.
So y'all say anything, if you'll.
Prices.
Sixteen, though.
Uh, sixteen thousand two ninety five. The extras did not get added into the twelve thousand two hundred total. So the center office is owning, uh, those three items, the full aluminum roof, the escape door and, um, it could be rubber.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve agenda item number twenty three, well, not to exceed sixteen thousand two hundred ninety five dollars.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Twenty four, discuss and take action on flooring quote for word furniture for veteran service office.
So, uh, in my budget presentation, uh, last opinion was expressed to bring this back funding this year. This is, uh, reflooring the veteran service office through word furniture for thirty nine eighty eight, through project funds.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Moving, second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty five, discuss and take action to authorize Microsoft threw up with no changes, close out year one of three of the Microsoft license.
On that.
Uh, so this is a Microsoft threw up form. Uh, there's no cost to it. Basically, we need to have it authorized to be signed off to close out the previous, uh, licensing year. And this will allow us to make new numbers for this current year. For next year, current year. Now this closes out the last.
Okay.
I moved to approve twenty five.
My second, thanks.
Moving, second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion case. Twenty six, discuss and take action to authorize the renewal of V M W, VMware licensing and support for V O I P phone system not succeed twelve thousand six seventy two to be paid for my T project funds.
All right, so this item, uh, I actually came to court on June sixteenth and had a quote approved that was for the phone system that was both Cisco and VMware. Uh, we went to make the purchase, um, for the VM portion of that. And since then, uh, Broadcom has purchased VMware and they have phased out the VMware Essential license line that we were going to purchase. So this, uh, this new total, twelve thousand six seventy two is the licensing for VMware Enterprise. It's the only option we have to, to purchase the licensing. And then last week, we actually received a cease and desist letter from Broadcom. Uh, because of this purchase has not been completed yet. So they're kind of playing hardball, but.
Okay, so what does the, what does the enterprise license offer us? Generally, that's a lot more than just a specific.
Correct. Um, well, with the enterprise, there's additional features. Um, there's a, there's a application called D Center. It's a management application that we did not get with the Essentials. Um, so there is a perk that it's easier to manage all the VMs. Um, so there is an added benefit that, but there's a cost.
Where did this fall into what you got budgeted, Dave? Pretty close.
Um, the original, uh, for the Essentials was forty five sixty. So it's, you know, felt that almost thirteen thousand now. So. Yes, sir. It did, it did.
And so we do need them, right?
Yeah. One of the VMs and our phone system would be down.
Uh, I moved to approve twenty six.
Over burl.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Moving, second all in favor, raise your hand. Twenty, motion approved. Twenty seven, discuss and take action on corrected cost of purchasing Microsoft three sixty five license, fourteen thousand two forty seven for initial purchase and the cost of forty two seven forty two eighty.
I left the good one for the last. Uh, yes, sir. Again, last, last, uh, July, on June sixteenth, I came through the purchase of the Microsoft three sixty five licenses. For the, the approved cost back then for, uh, six months within fifty four thousand. The new cost, uh, since we couldn't make the purchase because of the true up that y'all just agreed to, that kind of delayed us. I found that the licensing that they quoted us, um, was a different skew from what we already purchased. So the new, uh, the new price for this year is gonna be fourteen thousand two forty seven sixty compared to fifty four thousand. And then the ongoing cost for next year is gonna be forty two thousand seven forty two, which is less than what we would have paid for the partial year of this year. So.
Made up for the phones.
So all the numbers are going down. That was already pre-approved. I just wanna give y'all an update on that.
Does this, with this, um, license here, I think we talked about the Adobe.
Yes, now the, the Adobe that's, that's on the quote, that's only because the Texas DIR quote covers all Adobe package, the products and Microsoft products.
Okay.
So it's the Texas DIR, uh, contract that governs those two product lines. All we're purchasing right now is Microsoft through that contract.
I make the motion to approve agenda item twenty seven.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank y'all. Twenty eight, discuss and take action on order twenty twenty five dash seventy eight amendment in the budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Morning, Professor.
Um, system, uh, to our current budget. Uh, we need to transfer a hundred fifty nine five ninety seven from contingency to, uh, some, or purchase of some equipment and most of the money going for indigent, uh, defense and court related cost. Uh, twenty five thousand, uh, this is the contract that was recently approved for the EDC. Uh, and that money's coming out of contingency. Uh, IT hardware, software, uh, and the one below it, uh, county auditor financial software. This is just transferring the money from one line to another, same product, but we're consolidating all of the cost in one line item. Uh, voter registration, uh, jury reimbursement fee, reimbursement from the state, uh, increasing our budget to cover our cost. Uh, uh, the next one, a jury fee reimbursement, same thing. Uh, court at law, uh,
That, that one there, Patricia's got thirty nine four and then forty four, two different, it, it's got two different numbers.
Which one?
The one you're looking at, county court at law. I mean, under the explanation, it's got thirty nine thousand four hundred, but when you look at the amount of the amendment, it's forty thousand. There's a thousand dollars difference.
Tap on my part. We had to go back and add a thousand.
Okay, so it's forty then.
Forty thousand. Uh, under the, uh, county court at law, the twelfth judicial and the two seventy eight, this is moving. Did to cover the indigent fees from contingency. Sheriff recording money from, uh, grant revenue to cover the cost. Constables or, uh, just transferring, reclassifying a purchase from operations to capital. Addal probation. This is the purchase that was recently approved for the equipment, uh, for the probation department. Roden Bridge, uh, one, it's a reclassification of an item to capital, same thing in two and same thing in four. EMS fund is reclassification of monies, uh, between categories. And then on the next page, our project expenditures, uh, moving, uh, money to fund. You know, plumbing project. We had money in one line item, uh, we actually two different line items that was combined, uh, and that was, uh, with the balance coming from contingency.
That's good.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Twenty nine, record management and archive plan presenting.
Harry, do you need the PowerPoint first? PowerPoint first or this?
Y'all did get the backup plan in your backup, correct? Double check. Okay, so the purpose of this is to outlaw their restoration and reservation payments for that coming year for the county clerk's office. Our ultimate goal is to digitize all of our records. This will make them more accessible to the public and will minimize the handling of original documents thereby, um, helping reduce the risk of damage to them. Go to the next page. In summary, the, the majority of our records, as y'all know, that are maintained by the county clerk's office are paper based. These documents must be protected against deterioration, theft and the wear and tear associated with people handling. An effective records management requires careful attention to retention schedules, preservation strategies, replacement procedures and long-term ar- archival methods. Even though we have a very well structured records management program that is supported by the archival restoration and pres- preservation management plan, these challenges can be addressed without financial impact to the county. I'll get into that in a minute. Go to the next slide. Little bit of history of, uh, Walker County, since its inception in eighteen forty six, the Walker County, since its inception in eighteen forty six, the Walker County Clerk's Office. Has served as the official repository for over forty types of documents. In eighteen forty six, all records were handwritten. In nineteen oh nine, typing of records began. In nineteen sixty two, most records were converted to microfilm. In nineteen sixty nine, computers were introduced. In twenty thirteen, preservation and digitization efforts began and in twenty four, technology and security of records became a primary focus.
Sound up for your turn up. Did you say nineteen sixty nine computers were?
Nineteen sixty nine computers were introduced.
You didn't think we knew all that back in nineteen sixty nine.
This is just an overview of the, uh, of the present inventory of our records. Um, currently, we, we house these on three different mediums. Some of them are on three different mediums. Versus paper, which consists of books and file folders. Second is microfilm and then the third is the digitization that we are currently working on. Um, most of our records date back to the eighteen forties. Until nineteen eighty six, records were separated in different volumes rather than following the official record. Uh, prior to nineteen eighty six, the records were like mechanic's links, deed of trust was all separate. Now it's just official public record. Next slide.
When you get digitized. In there, save on the computer. Are they saved in multiple spots? So if something happens to our plane frame here or.
Or the cloud, yeah.
The cloud, something happens to our courthouse and it's no longer a courthouse. It's, they're saved somewhere else.
They're maintained through. The cloud and on a backup server in their two different backup servers. One is in Dallas and one I believe is in San Antonio. So there's two different ones. Um, the laws regarding the fees that I'm going to be asking to keep collecting, um. County clerk's archive is local government code. One eighteen point oh two five, little background history on that. It allows counties to assess a fee up to ten dollars. For their preservation of older records followed with clerk. This fee is adopted as part of the annual budget for the county clerk. The vital fee, which is health and safety code one ninety one point oh oh four five. The Bureau of Vital Statistics may charge fees for, for providing services to the public. This fee cannot exceed one dollar. And the records management, which is local government code one eighteen point oh two one six. I don't know why I have oh two five on there. Um, background is county clerk records management, uh, fee for non-court related services. And this is designated for deposit into a fund only for specific preservation. Next slide please. Now, this is an overview of our fees as of five fifteen twenty twenty four, uh, twenty twenty five. Another typo, um, beginning balance, revenue that we're projecting and the interest. And if you flow down, keep flowing down, um, revenue to be retained. And the records management will be about four hundred and nine thousand. This goes over the years of us just letting it sit and get. Get more and more so we can do more projects. Next slide. This is the archive account, same concept. Things coming down, uh, like we recently just had our flat cabinet order. That was done last year. We, we pay for that out of this fund and. If you take both of those accounts, we're roughly about eight hundred and forty thousand that we have to sit for preservation stuff. Next slide. This just kind of goes over a little bit of what we've accomplished, um, some of the stuff that we're still working on to get finished and, um. The progress that we're doing. We started doing quite a bit in-house, uh, when we changed a co-file. Back twenty nineteen, a lot of our preservation back scanning stopped. The system was supposed to have that compatibility, but it didn't. We are just now getting into finishing the marriage license, doing our delayed records and things in-house. Um, because that program did not have the features that we were told it was, was supposed to have. Uh, next slide. And the cool thing about the, about these funds are, is that with us having close to eight hundred and forty thousand retained. We, we can, are excited to say that we can do all of this without asking for funds through commissioners' court or affecting the tax rate. So the next item will be asking for y'all to approve the. Records management, the vital statistics fee and the archive fee.
So it's basically the user fee.
Yes, it's charged on documents whenever people come in. It's not a, like a tax or it, it doesn't affect tax rate.
When do you think you'll have all that stuff scanned in?
I don't want to set a timeline on it, but I foresee hopefully in the next three to four years probably. To be complete. Cause we've got several books upstairs that we're going to be sending off to get restored and digitized at the same time. We're still going back doing our own case management. Um, but with the load of what the staff has, only having one probate clerk or one civil clerk. It gets kind of time consuming to get some of that stuff done in a timely manner. Uh, we are doing a. Clean up on probate right now and then we're fixing to kick into our registry of the court. Um, transformation from QuickBooks to the Tyler program. So there's other things going on the office that takes quite a bit of time to get there. My end review soon. Do y'all have any questions on the piece?
No, no, but it's what you've been doing for a while, all right.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a project that will pay dividends forever going forward. It's quite a legacy leave is. And that's what, what you took care of.
You know, she was coming to ask him for money. We already know probably he would get put on a black burner.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Gary. Unless you got more up there.
You got more?
Five thirty.
Yeah, you done with twenty nine?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thirty, discuss and take action on county clerk statutory design, designated fee for records, archives and bottles.
Like a motion to approve.
Well, moving second on favor is your hand. Everybody approved it. Motion passed. Thirty one, discuss and take action on copier, new replacement for county clerk vital department.
What we had talked about at the last budget meeting, you know, like said, to put it back on. On fourth, for, for this budget. For the replacement.
I make the most of approval agenda in thirty one.
Where's the money coming from? Copy your fund.
Copy your replacement fund, yeah.
So on, so on that lease price, I, I know we hadn't looked at a lease. Does that include the prints and everything? So for a hundred and twenty one bucks a month, you can have a copier and if it breaks down, they bring you another one.
Yes.
This is a lease versus a purchase?
Uh, there's both.
Oh, okay, there's both on the quote. Okay.
One, one sixty, one sixty four hundred dollars, the other one's a hundred and twenty one. Dollars a month.
What's one twenty one times sixteen?
Well, I just know when that copier goes down in your office, we close down. So that, that, that's what I, that's what some of the times I'm worried about is. The replacement or downtime.
The case management one on the opposite side that we can use. So I won't be completely down to the public, but it would cause havoc in the office.
Yeah, and I don't know how much you spend a month on printing.
I'm taking the, we, a while back, uh, several years ago now, there was a, a big study done by. And, um. The results of that study was. To, uh. Uh, purchase. Pay a general maintenance than it was to lease because so many of our copper, copiers. Lasted longer than, uh, the lease and that, so you kept paying the lease instead of buying the copier. The other big difference is from budgeting and accounting and financial auditing purposes. Whether you lease or whether you purchase it, you still have to treat it. As if you purchased it and that the lease is just deferred payments. So, uh, this would be a big departure from what we're doing county wise and. Probably needs, before we switch from purchase to lease, um, probably purchasing needs to do. Uh, a comparable study that shows basically the life of our copiers and. Over the life of the copier, which is less expensive.
Yeah, we actually went away from that since I've been here because we had so many issues with it. And went to purchasing. Yeah, it was always a problem getting somebody to come down here and take care of it when it broke down. So we, we started buying it and buying the maintenance program with it and it was a whole lot better for what we was doing. I, I'm not for leasing it. That's just.
And if the, if the court wants to consider it, I just think we need to do a comprehensive book at that.
Guys, you spent sixty five bucks as long as on print. So that's half of the lease.
For the month.
For the month. So.
It says like leasing a vehicle. I don't like that either. So I'm not much of a lease kind of.
As long as you get your service.
Yeah.
Black side and that's what was.
We still gotta get service on the other one too.
So with, with the leasing, um, you, you, it comes with the service. Same, same deal as if we bought the machine. They have twenty four hours to come out and look at the machine. Tell us what's wrong with it and buy parts, same thing. The glory with the leasing is you get it for sixty months, which is a five year period. At the end of that sixty months, you can turn it in and get a new machine. You don't have to worry about it breaking or finding parts or anything to that effect part. The maintenance is cheaper on a lease than it is because again, it's, the maintenance part of it is. You pay per click. So every time something goes across the top of that, you pay for that for your maintenance, okay? The pooling of your copies is if the county makes eighty thousand copies a month. It's this price. If we come in under that, it's a whole lot less price. So they, they're allowing us to pull our per clicks and get charged less. Over a sixty month period with all the copiers that we have, we would be saving seventy five thousand dollars on maintenance fees.
Well, I'll just argue with you on that, but I'm not going to do it in this courtroom, but I can tell you it did not work before. When we leased it before and we went away from it because it wasn't working. You know, so that's just where I stand on it unless you can show me something different.
Copier, I'm not sure of the age of the one we currently have up there. But there is stuff that is broken on it that they cannot fix. They don't make the parts anymore. So.
How old is it?
We're, we're in this era of, you know, it's not like the way a nineteen fifty Chevy was made. Everything is made now that only lasts four or five years anyway, and you're having to upgrade or replace it.
How, how old is it?
It was bought in two thousand and thirteen.
So, well, yeah. Lost a lot expectancy. You were trading it.
Yeah, it's been a while. It's just been babying it. That's up to y'all.
I think I need some more information on this. No, this is like I said, we have always just bought them. But surely somebody out there has some, done something that, that says, I guess, say this one, if we buy one and it lasts ten years. That's one thing. If we buy it and it lasts six, then it, then you're buying another one. It almost makes sense to do.
Or you're trading it in.
Just like cars, you're a good one and then you might get a limit, but all, all of our vendors. Uh, will replace them if they, i- if we're leasing, uh, a copier and, and they. Has a problem like every three months or coming out or every six months they're coming out. Their service that one, they'll replace it free.
I, I mean, I see Kerry's, are you been also three years from now, what was square is now round. And or triangle shaped and it doesn't, doesn't work anymore, so.
I mean, we literally have paper stuck in it to make it think the door's closed, like folded up paper. And if you hit it the wrong way or it gets to making too many copies.
Yeah, it doesn't go.
But it's twelve years old.
Yeah, it, it's time for a few problems. It's twelve years old.
Yeah.
I'm good either way.
Yeah, yeah.
She needs a copier.
I would, I would almost be willing to, to chance it, to try, to try a lease and have, and have some. Empirical data to have next time a, a copier comes up. Cause like I said, we have, we have, we have nothing right now. And that's probably one of the business or. Uh.
The vitals.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I think. Probably the DA's office does a lot more than we do.
Yes, the DA's.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, I believe the DA's office does a lot more than we do.
They're, they're probably next.
For a thousand a month then or a year.
Yeah, so I, I would say that my, my two cents would be, we, we don't have, like the last time we did it was like four or five years ago when we stepped away from the other ones and kind of went to buying them. I think if, if you're willing to be our guinea pig, then I would, I would be willing to give it a try on the lease and just see how it goes. And if it doesn't work out, it's just one, it's not twelve.
Right.
Go that way, so.
You're going to prove to do the lease?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll amend my motion to approve the lease purchase, whatever number that one over there is. Number thirty one for the, to lease the.
So how are you going to do that as far as pulling it out of the copier fund? Cause what is going to pull the whole amount? Now you're just pulling a monthly fee.
How's that gonna work, Patricia?
Uh, a lease is an ongoing cost, so it may, it'll be budgeted as part of the budget.
Yeah, just rolled into it every year, yeah.
So it'll be a monthly bill that we pay every month.
Will it come out of the county clerk budget or the copier fund?
County clerk.
That's cheap, a hundred and twenty bucks a month, that's cheap.
You already been in sixty five.
I mean, it's still, if it only lasts five years, it's a thousand bucks more to lease it than it is to. Pay for it. So you got to get into several years past that, um, to get the, have the return on your. Do you have money in your budget?
I mean, we probably can cover it this year. If not, we'll do a transfer, but we'll need to add it to nation.
Not that much though, that's a hundred and, that's fifty hundred bucks a year.
I, I, now, I'm going to throw this question out there, being it, being that it's a copier. And that's part used for preservation. Could we tap into records preservation for that?
That, that's your call if it meets the criteria.
Right, it's not that much for us.
If it's a general office, it would need to come out of general office.
And.
Good for thought.
I'm trying to wade deep into this, but I've been here a long time. I remember when this conversation had a real time. Is there a differential from the cost per copy on the lease versus the cost per copy on the, I feel like that was a thing.
That was a problem before too, I think.
Every time that you make a copy, the lease, the lease flat, how many copies you make or is it charging per copy versus. You own it, you don't, I think.
It is, it is a different charge, uh, leasing or, and that was the glory of pooling. The county together, you get a much cheaper price. Uh, if you pull it and make less copies, uh, I, I don't know that it's like point zero zero four one. Uh, versus point zero zero seven five, something like that.
So it's more than that one twenty a month if you start paying per copy then. You gotta pay per copy or how do they do that?
Everything is paid per copy. You pay per copy, but it's more.
One twenty one is to lease the machine, then it's the point oh oh seven five for copy.
I just, I just.
But if we buy it, it's four zero zero four.
Yeah.
Stuck without.
You're still going to be paying this sixty something.
Yeah, yeah.
Sixty four dollars a month.
Yeah, but not, not as much if, again, pulling it together, but you are correct, even if you own it or if you lease it. It's still a per click cost.
I say, if you're willing to try the lease for us, so we have something to look at going forward, that'd be my motion to authorize the lease of the equipment.
I do.
Out of. Not her budget this year, but put it in the budget, add it to the budget next. That'd be my motion.
So again, uh, to clarify Cheryl, so the cost of this lease is a hundred and twenty one dollars and fifty three cents a month. Times sixty months.
Right.
Plus point zero zero seven five for every copy she makes in that sixty months. Correct?
Okay, yes.
Okay, and so this base lease cost is a thousand more than the purchase price.
For five years, right?
For five years. Um, no, the lease would keep going on. You'd still keep paying the one twenty one.
Not after sixty months.
Who owns it after, when, when you lease it, who owns it at the end of those five years?
It's only a sixty month lease, so at the. It's only a sixty-month lease, so at the end.
And then get another.
She will turn in and do a new lease.
Okay. Okay. And then. We'll be paying for that. Right? Okay.
Yeah. All right. That's my motion.
I can't help you with this one, Bill.
Okay.
I'm, I'm.
I'm gonna try it. So I'll give you a second.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. All those against.
I remember before it was a big problem, so.
Yeah. Commission court thirty-two, discuss and take action on municipal court facility fund. I'll put that on there. So we did some budget transfers the other day and then. We charged them a square footage. Miss Allen, this is more toward you. We charged them a square footage price a month?
Uh, a percentage based on the square footage they occupy times the cost of the bill.
Do we have that in an agreement anywhere?
Theoretically, there was an agreement back when, uh, if I'm, I'm going from memory here. There, they paid a contribution of three hundred thousand dollars for the building. Uh, and then the agreement was that they threw out a, of the cost associated with the square foot they were occupying. I thought there was a contract.
Yeah, they're still asking me for copies.
A finger on a contract as of the last time I talked to Kerry.
Larry, did you get your issue fixed out there with. Transitorial service?
We're still watching to see how, how it goes.
Okay.
It's, it's working out okay on our end so far.
Okay. I was just making everybody aware that. We're having some issues, but we're fixing them. But that was more just to let y'all know. We're working stuff out, trying to figure out on. That if something happens, then we get a new building at some point. So they don't pay us for janitorial service, but we clean it. And Larry had some discussion, trying to figure that out and fix it out where they don't jump on our people.
We currently budget ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars a month. Uh, we don't spend that except for one year. Uh, there was. A bunch of repairs to the alarm system. And it went up to closer to the ten thousand, but uh on average, they're paying about. Two to five thousand a year.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all I had on that. So we'll pass on it.
I mean, that's really all they're paying for the use of the building. That seems really fair, doesn't it? That's, I was intending this.
That's why I put it on there, so.
Want to break it down, we need to know how much they can get. I mean, I know they're odd sized every day. But as far as they're using the court and all that, that would be information we need to know. Probably would need to know.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay.
Act thirty-three, discuss, take action on Southeast Texas Resource Conservation Development dues twenty twenty-six and the amount of five hundred dollars. Y'all were questioning this last year. I put it on there for y'all to talk about again. This is that thing I think you talked about.
I attend these and I remember this and um we got money. Part of the money for Trash Bash for that. Don't quote my memory here, but a couple of years ago, you have to skip every year, every other year on that to get that. Uh, I think it's still something that. We need to support. So my motion to approve the five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-four, discuss and take action on the purchase of two new desktop computers with monitors and one. Surface tablet for county judge's office. That's uh, the tablet is for Dr. Wells and the two are for Shelley and Ally.
I talked to Doc a while back, nothing particularly, but he did say his was in really bad shape.
He's on his second sur- uh.
Yeah.
Surplus one that we've been doing. It's, it was.
And it was duct taped.
It was duct taped.
Oh, it looks bad. I saw it.
He gonna get all good out of it.
Yeah. So that's my motion to approve thirty-four. Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Thirty-five, discuss and take action on civil, civil litigations related to EMS. We'll go into executive session under. Five five one point oh seven one.
All right, time is ten forty seven. We're back from executive session. We're all updated and no action was taken. We'll go on plan development number thirty six, discuss and take action on revised plan approved for plat number twenty twenty three zero zero eight. Woodhaven subdivision, Daniel Jake Tover, survey A five four.
Developers submitted a set of outdoor drawings. Small changes to drawings. Stephanie's online. I'm here there.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Um, any comments on the drawing set that's?
I'll just note, I'll just note that the updated plans generally consist of revisions to the the pond due to the variance that was granted to allow for the existing elevations to be utilized. And they didn't detail those existing elevations, so that's not something we can verify, but the ceiling engineer did certify that the capacity was equal to or greater than the original plan set. And so our no objection is conditioned on that, you know, the accuracy of that statement.
But what she said, like, remember, they asked for a variance to show for the variable of that of that slope. And they didn't detail that variable with the detail of the. Joe contours for. Slopes, but the engineer for the project, so. That it will operate. Possible for us to verify that slope plans because the detail of the slope.
Cause they usually just where they use.
Would you need to put a note on the, do you want to note on saying that? No, 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 I don't think that was, it's not into the court that we're relying upon their interpretation. Got it. Move for approval.
Moving second law in favor of your hand. Thirty seven, discuss and take action on Greg Wilmeth's request for variance to section seven point seven of the Walker County subdivision regulation regarding ten percent bond.
So they don't have any rows that have anything that we're taking over and then it's usually what the remaining bond is for, so my motion is going to be to approve, not require them to ten percent bond.
I'll second that and Brandon and I went out there last week and I asked actually a question that I asked him, but everybody has, for instance, an existing county road.
Yeah, the, the, just so the court knows while this the, our bonding requirement is for the improvements constructed under regulations, part of that is detention. Court has waived this requirement in the past when detention was the sole development, but it has still.
I got a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, and Andy, which one you want to do first?
Let's just, just, I think for the, for everyone's sake, clarity, it would probably be better, this is, I'll take responsibility for this, this is the way we turn around. Probably better to proceed from forty to thirty nine to thirty eight.
There you go, forty, we're gonna go forty. Discuss and take action on Liberty Banker's life insurance company request for regarding roads and drainage improvement, construction plan requirements for proposed ranches of Huntsville development.
So this is generally a request to waive the all of the, the developers are here, agents are here. If you want to come board, you don't give them your name, your full name.
I'll get it in the record. Yeah. One, my name is Hayden Moses, this is Michael from Marcus Kajawa. Uh, we're here on behalf of Liberty Banker's group.
Hookberg.
Uh, Liberty Bankers Insurance.
Okay, thank you.
You get both those names?
Hayden Moses and Marcus Kajawa.
How do you spell his last name?
K U J A E W A.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So we're here present on behalf of Liberty Bankers, uh, just three guys are very concerned, are answering any questions you guys might have. Uh, I presented the Andy and his team, uh, with PowerPoint this weekend. I think you got this morning.
Yeah, and so when did we get all this, Andy, but it's just coming?
Don't make this up, we had the variance, obviously those are just moving back up, you have also our response letter or review letter or something here. The PowerPoint. While we were sitting this morning, so that hasn't been reviewed as part of any of this. I provided you guys a copy, but you received it, but technically it's not even official for backup.
So the slideshow that I had. All it's gonna look like, uh, question, thinking about clarity, guys, for what you guys have questions on. So essentially the ranches at Huntsville, our, our goal is provide families or individuals the ability to own a small parcel of land in an area where sometimes it's hard to find. And we'll get to why we think that's important on a, on a little later, but our project will be a lot of development, meaning that we'll be selling the lots of office, of office not be providing any sort of infrastructure, creating improvements to the land, that's going to be mostly just providing infrastructure for power and a, a surveying off pieces of land for someone to buy, uh, provide, you know, for the families and everything. Uh, the construction will take place hopefully over the next eighteen, twenty to twenty four months, and it consists of tree clearing, road install, survey taking and power infrastructure. So our objective for this and why we think this is going to be a great project is that we believe that land ownership is a foundational element for personal freedom and economic independence. Uh, if you want to provide that to the hardworking everyday Texan. We think that land ownership, along with many other traits and values, enables individuals to do many things that they're not able to do right now, uh, which is the custom home, part of business, and ultimately invest in a family's future. In summary, we believe that land ownership supports the broader delivery side Americans and Texas Texans. See, so our goal is to provide improved savings value. So our variants is, there are three of them in nature, uh, fourth one he mentioned was the no civil plans. Second one is going to be a roadway design variance, third one's going to be private roads. Uh, kind of going that little bit, uh, private roads, we're requesting, um, actually start with the, with forty.
Is that a different, uh, number we?
Yeah, we're on forty.
Forty. Andy, do they, they fall under our new policy rules, right, that was passed in court? So, oh, I mean.
I'd be a yes.
Also, most likely yes, cause when did they bring this to you?
It's that.
When did they bring this to you? Was it after that?
They submitted the variance request before that, but we haven't received an application.
Well, the variance request to me doesn't really give you anything that.
They, they haven't submitted an application for some of these.
Yeah, okay, all right, well then my answer, yeah, they follow into the new one. Go ahead.
Yep. So for forty, uh, that variance is questioning for no civil plans. Uh, the reasoning by this request is because, um, like I said earlier, we're planning to do no infrastructure or grading operations to the site. Uh, the goal is to install a road at grade and stake off these lots as parcels of land, so there will be no um, water insulation, sewer storm and no grading, um, we're building no pads for homes to be built on. But the hope is that these families can buy these parcels of land and build their own property, uh, on, on their own land. Any questions for reporting?
You just.
I know it. I hate to cut your presentation out, but this, this circumvents every subdivision regulation. You know, um, north side, right across that power line easement or, or the next property up was an old subdivision that we called it windswept down, so it died out. He went belly up years ago, we've got subdivisions like this, uh.
On nineteen.
One on nineteen. Southwood out there, Huntwood, you know, they put in the roads. There is no way in hell I'm gonna let y'all put in something that does not have infrastructure and no roads. I, I, I mean, like I said, I know you read our subdivision policy because you stated in one of these, these variances that, uh, you wanted an exemption from the two inches of asphalt. Well, now it's six to eight inches of concrete, uh, in our new subdivision policy that passed, but less than a month ago.
Yeah, almost a month ago.
Uh, uh, there, like I said, there, there is no way I'm gonna be in favor of this, uh, you know, just cutting out pieces of property and selling them with no access at all to anything.
Why, well, just to clarify, sir, script and all, um, we want to build a road, an all weather road, like use a rock based material.
Yes.
Uh, so people in any time of the year would be able to access their property.
Well, uh, that, that's, I, I've got plenty, Walker County Road, you're wanting to go public, but that is not gonna, for three hundred homes, I, I mean, how many miles of road is in this thing, do y'all know?
I don't know, sir.
Okay, I, yeah, so I, I'll let you go on with your presentation, but, uh, you know, this is the first time I've heard about this was when I seen it on the agenda. Y'all haven't contacted me, uh, at all about this. Um, we've wasted our time, we've wasted our engineers' time, which has cost us money, wasted y'all's time, I could have told you in the beginning this wasn't gonna fly. Um, wasted y'all's money on top of that. And, and if you had started a little earlier with and been serious about this, maybe you would have fell under our old subdivision policy. But at this point, um, you know, there's no way. I'll let you proceed.
Yeah. Appreciate, I appreciate you saying that, and I think the second, well, the second line variance goes to the road design, uh, we understand uh, ordinance was updated to a concrete base, uh, but what we're gonna hopefully install out there would be a rock base called glass tonight, which is kind of like a chip and seal type product. Um, and this, this development is not going to be a subdivision where there's homes built overnight, right?
But it will be one day.
Could be one day, I, I agree with that, but it will be a situation where the, it'll be low impact, low traffic in and out to where we've, I believe, and I also, I did engineering for six years. And I don't have a P E license, but within six years, like, I believe that an asphalt or concrete road would be overdesigned for this. And I think if we built one of these concrete or asphalt roads, that cost would go on to the landowner.
Well, absolutely.
I agree.
Yeah.
But we're, but the hope is that.
But how are they gonna, how are they gonna get into the road once there's three hundred homes built in there? Uh, I mean, what you've got ain't gonna hold up, I can tell you, what you present is not gonna hold up. There's no way.
The cost of your stuff's gonna be passed on to the homeowner, why not just pass on the road too?
We're trying, we're, the hope is that we can give these landowners, you know, the costs for this land. Hope we don't want to pass on another extra fifteen point thousand dollars of land cost if we can save that cost upfront.
Well, I invite you to go look at Commissioner Doggett's subdivision up the other side of the river. Kind of same scenario.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, same scenario, you know, and, and it's just, well, we're already with that little small subdivision that's having problems. There's no way I would encompass nine hundred and some like of, of this, you know, and, and be okay with it, no way. I would encourage you that if y'all are gonna do this, get serious with it and, and get something drawn up that we can at least talk about, you know, I, I honestly want to talk about this because it's, it's a waste of everybody's time. Okay.
So. Mr. Kergano, all due respect, we had, I, I believe contacted this gentleman and, you know, had been working with them, had, had we known, you know, to go straight to you or.
But, 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 but you read our subdivision policy, like I said, I know you looked through it. And, and any variance that says we don't want to do anything, I would assume you would have contacted, uh, more than just, just Mr. Isabel.
Oh, I, I agree with that, but we had a call, um, probably a month or two ago on this, and I kind of explained to them what we wanted to do and we cut through the together, you know, it's a, we have three variances for this, which is what we're presenting to you today. Um, so could we done more, um, duty duty on this to get with you? For sure, but we, we want to follow the rules relations here to, to get these variances from you guys.
Okay.
Discuss in person what we wanted to do.
All right, I'll let you go forward then.
Okay. Well, we discussed the, the first two, uh, variances, the last one would be, um, private roads, return development, um, the goal here.
We, we kind of need to vote on these as we go, I mean, you, you may be bouncing around a little too much.
Okay, sorry.
You know, I mean, we need to deal with the one that we're on, we hadn't voted on it yet, Judge. So.
You're, you're starting with number forty. Which is variance of three.
Where you at on that? No, Dan?
So, so Miss Moses, have you, uh, you've, uh, I guess on number forty as far as the road improvements of the, regarding the drainage of the roads, have you kind of presented everything you want to present on that, that specific variance? Forty is, is, uh, waiving the requirement to submit the engineering plan, Stephanie's online to, to answer the questions you guys have, she's over, comment letter. Yeah, I, I don't think I need to.
I don't think I need any assistance.
I'll, um, I'll make a motion that would deny number forty. Under the.
And a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, number thirty nine, discuss and take action on Liberty Bank Life Insurance Company request for variance to section eight and appendix F of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding road base requirements designed standard for these ranches.
We discussed this a second ago, uh, this is for essentially more described. I think that if we build an asphalt or a concrete road base, uh, it'll be an overdesign. Uh, I think, um, what we want to build is a glass tonight road base, which is essentially kind of like a chip and seal. It looks very similar to a, uh, to a, an asphalt road. Um, I think that with the low impact, low traffic nature of this element, um, in concrete or asphalt, that would be an overdesign. And like I said, we pass that cost on to the sale of the lot, but we don't, we'd rather keep this, these lots at a competitive price rather than a, a increase of price for what we don't think is necessary. Um, and the, um, slideshow I provided, there are pictures of one of our existing projects in Pineland Texas, which is very similar to what we're doing here, um, that has the same road base that we're talking about. Um, and we provide ditches on each side that, that will, um, provide adequate drainage. Um, and after looking at it, kind of like, you know, back of a napkin map, uh, I don't think there'd be any flood study issues or flood dashing flood impacts for this. Um, you know, it's because the runoff of a glass light roadway is, is nothing compared to a concrete road.
What's the competitive cost of a lot?
Sorry.
What's your competitive cost of a lot?
I'll let Marcus answer that question a little, a little deeper.
Um, in, in what way, Judge, I'm sorry.
I don't know, you said you wanted to keep the cost low and have the, the cost of a lot competitive, what's your target price on selling a lot?
Just, uh, the more aggressive you can be, the more velocity you could get as far as selling it out, so, um, uh, what that cost is exactly, I'm not sure. Um, but we're a life insurance company, different than most like, uh, typical real estate company where they have to make these sort of margins. The life insurance company is family owned, uh, out of Dallas and how it works is, as you guys probably all know in the room, you're, every month, everybody's paying their life insurance company or their policy and they take this amount of money and buy stocks and bonds. Uh, what we do is help them invest in real estate, so we're just going out and finding deals, uh, putting in the, developing it and then, uh, selling it off to the individual, so it's not like a typical, uh, margins judge where they have to bring back a certain amount, they just want their money in play. Um, I don't know what that answer is, but the, the, the lower you can get that price point, the more velocity you can get as far as sales. Um, if you, if you're super high priced.
Um, you know, our end of it, we need to know if those roads are gonna hold up, we're dealing with roads all over this county from developers that are a piece of shit and they built on specs that we're at now. So to me, y'all need to build some roads that's right.
Yes, sir.
And, and cutting these corners is not gonna work.
Yes, sir. Um, I, I, um, yes, sir, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, I, we just felt like as though building the rock road to you know, uh, not just, you know, uh, going out there and sprinkling gravel, I'm talking about, you know, them blading the road, compacting it, bringing in the, the rock and then also maintaining that, so we would have like a road maintenance association set up that we would, uh, everybody would pay in and they would maintain the, the road.
That crap don't work. We're here to tell you that crap don't work, we've got some of these all over this county, that's your, your thought process is not gonna work for this area.
Well, we work, we've been in this road. Yes, sir, I, I, I've been in the business for twenty years and we've done that on a, a handful of things and, uh, projects and uh, if it legally, if you're recording it, you have an association and all set up, there's legal matters to, uh, uh, for people to take to, yeah, and all that, but, um, I guess along with the thirty nine, uh, if you guys. All that, but, um, I guess along with the thirty-nine, uh, if you guys, I, I understand just recently, this is news to us, but y'all had just adopted, uh, the concrete one, um, i- if, if you would consider, if you, uh, wouldn't consider like a rock road, um, you know, even an asphalt, uh, road, I, I know Hayden said, you know, it might be overbuilt, but if you would even maybe consider that.
I can promise you it's not overbuilt.
Yeah.
How many lots is gonna be out there, over the period of years, you're gonna have dump trucks, everything in the world's gonna be building in there?
Yes, sir.
And then y'all guys are gonna be gone, and it's gonna be a piece of crap. We, we deal with this every day because of the growth that we got going on.
Yes, sir. And it's why we, we, we wanted to keep it private so that the burden wouldn't be on the county.
It still comes back to us regardless, we, we might have the burden, but, but they still deal with us.
Yes, sir.
Because of what developers do.
Yes, sir.
You know, so we, we have to make, you guys build the best we possibly can.
If, if a rock road is just completely out of the.
Completely, I'll help you with that answer.
If, uh, if, if an asphalt, uh, you guys would consider that.
Our policy is concrete at this point.
Move to deny thirty-nine.
I'll second that.
Good and second, for all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries thirty-eight, discuss and take action on Liberty Bank Life Insurance Company request for variance to section eight of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding private subdivisions with a private road for proposed ranches at Huntsville Development.
What does this end?
I was making notes, so our policy requires publicly maintained road. Private maintained requires a variance, they cite, um.
But they make it out too.
Right, site, site age is technically gonna be probably a variance to section eleven, that's in the notes from the engineer. But the request is, um, the reason that, that we reversed the orders you need to hear what the development was about first before we got to this, otherwise you're coming home on this one. The request is to, to give a variance to the code to allow the road to not be split. Stephanie, do you have any conditional to what you have in the notes on?
They make it out to four seven?
They do. There's two entrances.
I don't have anything to add.
Second.
Yeah, so, we, we don't have a problem being private, but they have to be built to the same standard as our public.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you may win this variance, but, but, um, in the end, if the roads are not built to our standards, then.
Yeah, we, we don't really have a lot of detail for how they're going to do that, and then paint it from the front. Some of the general plans, while we start.
Oh, absolutely, have y'all talked to text out at all about these entrances? I mean, you have two entrances, and, you know, I, I, without knowing the distances between them, and it's in a pretty good angle say a curve, but it is gonna be a line of sight.
That's just more property, um, so, yeah, I've worked with text a lot in the past, and we're prepared to, you know, solve maybe a right-hand turn lane if we need to. Um, you know, that's, that's a project that we never, like I said, I, I think if we did a C I A for, for this area, I don't know if a left-hand turn lane would be required, because I don't think the traffic.
Over three hundred homes, uh, I would say it's, honestly, you know, but that's, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I agree, just, just covered you on, on bringing it home.
Just, so, so, I'll, uh, Yeah, on, on this one, yeah, I, I don't mind, I will deny it, with the possibility of bringing it back, um, and, and you wouldn't have but, you know, this is gonna be kind of a two-part variance because of the road.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, we'll, I, we'll bring this one back later down the road, um, you know, we'll, we'll waive this. It's my.
Thank you, Moses, second.
Good and second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, all right, thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Miss Allen, you ready?
Need a minute.
Yeah, you might need a break. I was going to budget workshop.
It'll be kind of like a variance, just a lot of nodes in it.
You want me to put what Kim has up there, or you?
You wanna tell me? Let me carry out there, show you where five hundred. That's low.
I didn't make a step on you.
Yeah, that's the elevator, don't let the door itch.
Yeah, I'm running back somewhere to work.
I didn't say nothing, so that's done good.
You both find out.
You're right. Come in, develop, then they're gone.
Yeah.
The headache stays.
Yeah, it makes, makes vehicles look like a cakewalk.
That, that's exactly my subdivision, that's what they just said, but that's, they just didn't, ours didn't do that, walk the site, whatever, I never heard of that.
And then they're not gonna build?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wanna see where they.
Don't worry, actually, we're gonna take care of it.
Effective, I mean, they always. At the P O A meeting this past Saturday, the one P O A that, I guess I have to put this as one of them that's really strong, and the Lakeland people, they got their act together.
Yeah.
Or P O A.
But that thing's been in place for forty-something years, you know?
So I always, I always stress every time I go out there, like, y'all do not let this go, even if you show up and yell at each other.
And they started our bridge.
Keep it alive, the bridge is nice.
It's made done?
Yep, it's finished.
Hey, it's fast.
If it hadn't rained, it'd been done three months ago. We had, we had Doug and the bypass built like that, then it better rain, it just rained, it rained, it's still raining, but they, they jumped out, got it all in, it's nice, need some grass on it, but it's looking nice.
It'll be nice to die, actually.
Where did he say that last one I did was?
Uh.
I was gonna go back and ask him.
Yes, our point thing, it's like a couple of pages.
You have to V P N if we're on the wifi, Miss Allen? You have to V P N if, if you're on a wifi? I don't think you have to.
I had.
I just got trained on that the other day.
Best, brother. Get the road accepted.
You're on our wifi?
You know, talk about.
Just open up whatever you want to do.
Long time ago.
Yeah, I don't know some of this, that's gonna go down. I'll have to tell Quentin that when we're not in court.
He's not listening to you.
It's good, it's probably a good thing.
Not your desktop?
Can't believe we can't.
I think that's, I did it anywhere.
Are you on wifi, Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Is your wifi?
I mean, I know you read.
Uh, it's saying.
I know you read all this shit.
But you connect right away.
I'm proud he's on the concrete, that'll drive you a little way. Yeah. They want them to do rock, they certainly ain't gonna do concrete.
Well, you know, a, a, and you've got next, there's the old windswept downs, you remember it? You know, I mean, they sold lots in there.
Lots of lots, yeah.
And, and I think there's still one old man on the other side of the highway that's still holding on to it.
You know, they still had that.
On the other side of the road too, or this track's on the other side of the road. It's both sides, two four seven.
Cornberry bought all this.
Yeah.
A little windswept down.
I'm talking about this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's like eight hundred on one side, something on the other.
So they have anything to do with Andy Fly or not?
Maybe Andy sold it to that guy.
Was that, was that with some of those lots where they cut lost Indian, that lost Indian camp subdivision two years ago?
It comes into that.
That's, yeah, I know, remember somebody came in a while ago and they cut?
Yeah, but it was all down the frontage. And they were big tracks, so.
Yeah, big track.
Yeah. It was all at Ray and Ear Lane.
Wow, he's pretty well up front.
Yeah.
Yeah, he would have told, I think he would have told him, you can't go with no rock, no road, you can't.
I think he was, oh.
Or maybe Danny helped him out with some water stuff. Where he, he got in that. Cause he was wanting like a. Watering like that.
Well, you don't have to. That thing may hold.
Yeah, I can see that's a wreck fixing out.
Oh, yeah.
There's your next lawsuit right there, one out the door.
Quentin gotta have something to do.
Yeah, we gotta make sure Quentin's busy.
We were just referencing you, Quentin, we weren't really talking to you, we didn't want a response.
We didn't really want you to hear us, we. See what happens when we idle up here.
Yeah, sorry, y'all.
That's okay, Ms. Patricia.
Yeah, connector to the wifi, I'm trying to open a P D F that doesn't show that it's a P D F. So, that, see if that gets this one.
Well, they did that, I had to, that was a lot of work for me, I had to have Dan or the other guy come on my computer and fix that. It's, um, if you open it, just, just right, if you right-click it, instead of doing it like that, go back to, this, this is kind of how it made it work for me until he showed back up.
Okay.
If you go back to your.
I, I mean, we're showing all of the. It's marrying. Showing where it doesn't, it says it's a P D F, but it.
That's how mine was, yeah, I mean, daily was kind of an all over the county thing.
I have this.
Hey, Dan, there you go, maybe you can.
Yeah, right, right-click on the P D F file.
That's.
And do you see an open with option?
Yes.
All right, um, and then it should allow you to choose. Um, Adobe P D F.
Yeah, just go up and try your Adobe Acrobat up there and see if it'll open it, I, I think mine opened when I did that. But they can fix that for you.
Ronnie was fixing it out there and do.
Show them, but I really didn't want to bring it out.
Not like me, yeah.
Luckily, you didn't have to get up.
Yeah, yeah, that was a pain, I got, I was like, what?
If they hadn't got it going, I'd already got it.
Yeah, I know you would have. I usually, Ali, Ali, how you do?
Judge, could we take a five-minute recess, we work on some technical things?
Absolutely.
We'll do at eleven twenty, five minutes recess.
Now, again, we're back eleven twenty-five. We're gonna start the budget workshop.
Okay, before you, you have your book, and if you want to go to the general fund section. We'll see same format that you normally see the first column is actually. Last year, then you've got your original budget, revised budget and estimate this year. And then the final column is the proposed budget for next year. Uh, the budget you've got before you, you know, the county judges recommended budget. Uh, including in this budget on the decision packages that he's recommending for funding. All other decision packages for showing up in the. Column, uh, that we'll go through later. And then as in the past, court will discuss each of the requests. And can move them out of the recommended. And anything that's in discussion can be moved into the budget that you want to file. So as of now, what you're seeing on page three is the, uh. The budget as presented, if you look down to where the revenue is on, uh. Page three, you'll see two numbers above that. You will see the, uh, ongoing cost total of what is recommended. You will see the, uh, recommended one time that's included. And with the wins those funded, usually have about a thirty-three percent, uh, fund balance at the end of the year. The numbers as presented includes a one cent increase over the, uh, effective rate. Or it's now called the no new. And then, uh, the new revenue, we'll go back to page one. And if you look in your revenue column. Uh, budget twenty-five, twenty-six, you'll show that the no new revenue, uh, taxes that would be, uh. Estimated to be received, this is the amount of our current levy. So the twenty million five fifteen. And then the new growth number, this is the number of all the new value that was added to the tax roll. We're estimating about, uh. Six hundred thousand added, so that money is split out, the new value is split out between, uh, general road and bridge. And EMS based on the proportionate share of the taxes they're getting now. And then the second number you see, the five hundred and seventy thousand. We're estimating that we'll get with a one cent, uh, tax rate increase. We get six hundred thousand, so the five seventy. And then the difference between that number and the six hundred thousand is how much it needs to make. Road and Bridge give it two hundred thousand dollar increase that normally happens. So if you want to flip over to your road and bridge precinct page. These numbers, it's just the calculation of how much is precinct gets based on road mileage. These numbers are the, uh, amount that we had last year. And that, uh, provided Friday off page two. The new numbers of this year, so there was a slight. Uh, change in what actually went to precinct based on, uh, these numbers. Uh, the reason I put these in to start with, uh, my question was, should, uh, the precinct one, precinct car. For example, should those be added together and the number for the allocation be based on the one sixteen number? Or the one twelve number? I wasn't clear on that.
What is car?
I don't know what that meant.
Some. You still maintain them, they maintain.
Okay, so, um, then the numbers would change to these dark numbers on, on that spreadsheet calculation. So it would change a little bit what each precinct would get. But this budget, uh, is the, the recommendation is for the six hundred thousand. That, uh, road and bridges always got, and then the two hundred thousand dollar increase that road and bridges been getting. And then we, everything else is in the discussion column when we get to supplemental requests to. Um. The very bottom number, and like I say, this is based on the exact correct road mileage after we changed them, but. Based on last year's numbers, this shows the increase each precinct would get.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ronnie's winning that one.
For now. Hey, that Danny Streaks can get the bunch of them.
The ten dollar county optional county fee that we collect at registration. Is that the forty-four, five-ten or the forty-four, six-ten? Is that one of those two numbers? Do you know how much, what our revenue is for that? That ten dollar optional fee that we collect at regi-, it's on page four in the road and bridge.
Yeah, if you go back to page, uh. Starting on page four, right, these are the estimated for this year and the proposals for next year. The road and bridge fees, uh. The five hundred and forty thousand number, I think that's the number you're looking.
If that's the optional, whatever, let me see if I can get the actual word for it.
Yes.
Okay, if that's the option, we have an option this year, Court. And it was sent to me, Carrie sent it to me, so I thank you for that, for the information. Anyway, the option there is you can increase that from ten dollars to twenty. And if we're making a half a million dollars on ten. Somebody registers their car instead of paying eighty, they pay ninety, we pick up a half a million dollars. I like that math.
Well, yeah, I don't know anybody who wouldn't.
Yeah, sounds pretty good.
Yeah, I'd like to see us roll that in.
Okay, so that's gotta be brought to us.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, bud.
Yeah, would that start as soon as we vote on it?
I don't remember it starts September one or if it's.
We could do ten-one with our budget, because we can look at our number. And just, I mean, it's.
Or January one.
Was it, was it in the legislature?
It was in that magazine.
Yeah, I, I saw it in there. Let me see.
Stuff.
Y'all can go on, but I'll, I'll find it.
Yeah. You know, I like, let's put a flag on that if y'all are good.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we dialed it in.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Then if you want to flip through the EMS fund tab. Uh. Basically, the same logic as the general fund. If you look in, in the last column, the two oh two nine two six, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Uh, you can see our current year levy for, uh, EMS is a million, a three million, one sixty-one. Uh, seventy-seven thousand of the new growth was allocated to EMS, again, based on the proportionate share of how that split out. Um, then our projected revenues, uh, our interest. And then in the expenditure columns, uh, gonna back you up just a minute to our estimated column. You can see our, in our budget column, you see we have a pretty big fund balance, forty-three percent. Um, and that's really the, uh, product of two different things. One, in our current year, we're substantially underspending our EMS salary budget. So you can see we budgeted five million, two hundred thousand, we're going to spend about four point four. And, uh, that's due, uh, mostly to the, of course, vacant positions.
Right.
But also it's due in the new crew that was being added for the Riverside area. That didn't get started at the first part of the year.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing you'll notice is back under twenty-three, twenty-four. We had a very big bump in the ambulance revenues. Uh, three, five, we're normally in the three, three, one range. That was the result of the closeout of one contract and the big rush that was done at the end of the year on the collection. So we don't expect to see that number again, but it did help, uh, build up our fund. So again, in that column, you'll see the regular budget items. Uh, and what's in the bold numbers here, you'll see, uh, the recommended items for capital. And the recommended items for ongoing costs. And again, we'll go through that list and you can. Uh, review when those numbers can be changed. So it's kind of the big picture of where we are at this point. Okay.
And then just. On the bottom there, available at the end of the year, that forty-one percent and twenty-four, twenty-five, and that is mostly attributed to the. Uh, salaries?
It's attributable to the, uh, large collections that we just talked about in twenty-two, twenty-three. And then the vacancies as we were building up the cost for that new, uh, site. Uh, it taking longer to get that initiated than, uh, we budgeted for the full year. That didn't happen, and all of those positions, I believe, are not yet currently.
So that's what bumped us up from forty-one, forty-three to sixty-five.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So we should, we normally run around that forty to forty-five percent range.
And of course, this is, um, because, uh, yeah, exactly. Last year, we had the tax increase in EMS fund to build up to where we've got money for the ongoing. So that it should cover itself for a while. So yes, like next year, you'll probably see this number go down. Uh, as we spend some of this fund balance for capital.
Okay.
Okay, uh, and then in the, might be the first, first section in my book. Uh, a list of supplemental requests and, uh. All right, and the way this senate is presented is the first two columns are the requests made by the departments. Everybody there?
First page. Ongoing, you talk, you, you, where you at on this?
Yeah, that one. The first two columns are the requests by the departments. Okay. If you see them marked in green, those are the ones that, um, judges recommended that they be purchased during the current year. The very first column on the page, you'll see most of them are black, but then there's a few that are highlighted in green. Like, uh, county judge, three five hundred into two hundred.
It's very light green on your, on your left.
It's just a shaded area.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, very light, but those are the ones that are recommended for funding this year. Okay. Uh, then if you go to the column highlighted in light green. These are what's included in the recommended budget as presented. And then the last two columns are the items that were in the first column. That's currently included in the recommended, uh, that they were recommended as a discussion item by the judge. So anything moved out will re, will increase the fund balance. Anything moved in will decrease the fund balance. So for example, the, the first one you see in the green is the participation in the economic development. It's recommended, so it's part of those numbers that you saw in the summary page. Okay, and if you look at the bottom of the supplemental request pages. You'll see the totals that are there, like the one million, three ten. It's the number you saw on the general fund summary. The two million, thirty-one thousand, we saw a lesser number. Because anything related to the recommended salaries is already built in. But, uh, these, these are the numbers that you're working against to either move out or move in. Okay, so the first one on the line is the twenty-five thousand. The next item is maintaining the current benefits recommended. Maintaining the health insurance, the hundred and four thousand is recommended. On the health entry, uh, insurance retirement plan, this was basically the policy change. To, uh, include all employees to be eligible for that retirement plan. And what was initially submitted was after twenty-five years, the policy would be whatever the, the court wants to discuss. The recommendation would be to, uh, fund that out of one time. Uh, fund that hundred thousand out of one time and, uh. I'm sorry, yeah, the one time, but this twenty-two thousand, what this number is, is we have two people. That will be eligible for the first time for insurance in the current, I mean, in the coming year. Chances are, they won't re, won't retire, but according to our policy, we would budget for them. And you'd see that the initial number was the one forty-one. Changed it, uh, to where we're only recommending from ongoing the two that are already eligible.
Well, I'm not following that.
As, as they start collecting and putting on tax roll, as they start collecting and putting on tax roll.
Yeah, once they reach basically retirement age, that's what you're saying, right, Patricia? We go ahead and budget for it in the tax rate?
We don't need to budget for all seventy-eight people on the tax roll right now.
Yeah.
So this is the two that are fixing to be eligible.
That's the twenty, that's all that is?
Yeah.
For now.
Yeah, and the difference between the one forty-one and the twenty-seven is the one forty-one. Increased everybody that's eligible to retire to the current rate. Okay, uh, what was taught last year, and actually Commissioner Doggett brought this up. That at some point, we need to realize that some of that money will come out of this special fund. So this is basically the difference in the amount of the premium increase from the time they became eligible to be budgeted for. What the current rate is, which we would fund that out of, when the time came. We would fund it out of that special fund.
So if we go down this road, this will be a fixture in every budget from now on, right?
Uh, it, next year, when it comes in, this twenty-two thousand would be, uh, changed to the number of how many. Uh, the current, the current rate times the number of the people that became eligible for the first time during that year.
Okay.
It could be eight, it could be three.
Twenty-four, because we have more people that would come online that following year, two.
Okay, whoever reached their twenty, basically.
Yeah.
Whoever reaches their twenty, then you start budgeting.
Now, but the, this is, um, based off of twenty-five, what she just said, not twenty.
If I said twenty, I should have said twenty-five, then it's twenty-five years. No, we haven't got to that discussion.
This is, this is our plan.
But your question, if this is for the people that follow first rule of twenty years.
Okay, yeah.
This, this is.
That's this, yeah, th- this is our budget, yeah.
Yeah.
You got two people apparently that are eligible for the twenty years.
I, I know I got one of them in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so going down to the next one, uh, we had, uh, the. We calculated two numbers when we were doing the budget, what each one percent cost. And then we calculated a number for what each thousand dollars flat would cost. The countywide percent is included in the county discussion column. What is included in the recommended budget at this point is that each FTE would be budgeted at one thousand dollars. What this does, uh, in the past, when the insurance deductible went up. The court tried to make employee hoe, about half of this thousand, uh, covers that. Insurance increase, which was right at five hundred, the other five hundred is, uh, an increase in salary. So it would be a thousand dollars per employee. Uh, and this number, we'll probably want to come back and I'll discuss that.
Yeah, so okay, make sure I'm square on this right now, so I don't have dependency coverage, so.
You still get the thousand?
I would get one thousand dollars, my kids, that's a one percent pay rate for me. Right?
You would get.
No, it's a thousand dollars.
It's a thousand bucks.
Number he's.
Flat number.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I make approximately a hundred thousand, so that's a one percent.
But if they make forty thousand, they get a thousand bucks.
So we're one percent, it would be four hundred.
And, and they've got dependent coverage now.
Yeah.
And that's two thirds of that. So we, yeah, I'm not, that part we're gonna have to come back to, because I'm.
Yeah.
I don't want to look at our people, that's not enough.
Over the last several years, do we need to do a percentage rate increase and keep the salary study? Keep your, your blocks? Or do we need to do a flat because that benef-, that benefits all employees equally? As far as the amount of money that's added to their paycheck, or do we do a combination?
That's what we've done last year.
What we've done the last two years is the combination, done the flat to equal the, uh, insurance increase. And then pour the rest of it into the one percent. But all that is definitely something the court would want to discuss as a whole.
Yeah, and also what, what's.
This just tried to give each employee. Something and.
All right. Okay, and what I brought up twice, and I still haven't seen it here yet, is. They lump some retirement option that we can compare to the health insurance option. And show it to our people and find out which one they want. If we're gonna drop a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Into something to help retain people. I think we should look at all the options. I've said it. Several times, and it's not in here, nothing's in here with it, so very disappointed in that.
Yeah, I don't think, uh, thought Amy, did the court ask Amy to get some information?
She's got some stuff, I, I don't know.
It's not in here.
She was also, no, I, I've seen nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Me neither, so we can't put it in there until we see it, so she, I ain't still bringing it to court next time, I don't know.
All right, so right now, in my mind, these numbers right here, this hundred and forty-one and this twenty-two, that's either, that's either or for me, it's gonna be either or. I mean, I, I think we leave the number in there, because we're not gonna do both, obviously, that conversation.
Wait, well, this is already voted on, this is what, this, this isn't the new people, these are the ones that have twenty years coming in.
Existing ones, it's already in the system.
Yeah, these are the ones that.
It's not the new.
Not the new one.
No.
So the new is not here at all either.
No, it's, it's further down, Bill.
Further down.
We haven't got to it yet.
Give us four more lines, we'll get to it.
All right.
Okay.
So I'm still disappointed about my other part, I won't take that.
Uh, you pointed that out.
We can talk about it.
Going down to our next screen line item is the mandatory increase for the appraisal district, the fifty five. Uh going down and.
See, that one always gives me heart. Uh I, 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 I know, I say it every year, uh there's no justification, they just throw a number out there and say, hey. Yeah, well, I know, but it, it's.
They still ain't sold that land out there.
No, and that'll probably be twenty years.
Why they would, I would have never agreed to sell it to begin with, now sitting on a land, on a gold mine, oh yeah, you know?
Yeah, well, it's hard to sell land right now.
Yeah, it is really hard.
Moving on down to, we get to the next group, these are, it's under other, but these basically are our central costs. If the, the request was fifty thousand forty, a hundred and fifteen. The recommendation is to fund half of that amount and roll the difference into a contingency fund. So increase our contingency fund, so that if in fact we need this, we've got the money in the budget, but it would be in contingency.
Is that reflected in that two hundred and fifty thousand up, about ten lines from there? Okay, I'm good with that, okay.
Uh going down a little bit, Tri County, Tri County asked for twenty eight thousand and the fifty six thousand total. And what they were asking for was a, a person. Uh what's recommended is that the twenty eight thousand, which is the historic amount that we funded. That fund, and then uh talk with Tri County. Uh we have the opioid money, that settlement that we got. Uh but it's very specific of the criteria you have to meet in order to spend that money. So uh it may be that you would want to talk with Tri County to see if they can make their total request of eighty thousand fit within the criteria for that opioid money. And that would give you a funding source for the position they asked for uh without going into the tax rate.
Yes, I remember when um Mike Park was here, he was saying, you know, they're kind of dribbling crumbs out to us. But there's a mountain of money for programs and operations that if you, if you build something, so yeah, I think if we challenge him with that and say, hey. You know, build it, submit it, and we'll happily be the middle person like that, yeah, okay.
Right now, over the three years, we've got about a hundred sixty to a hundred uh, I think sixty, a hundred twenty. We've got about a hundred and forty thousand that we've received to date of that money.
Well, it's gonna drive away too.
Yeah, and, and that's why maybe that would be a one-time contract rather than building it into the tax rate. Uh going on down a little bit, uh right now, I'm gonna stick with just the ongoing, but I wanna go. Uh so the safe house and a, a time to read uh recommended as one time. Uh in the county I T budget, the, all the different contracts that we've been going through uh lately. But uh as we go down those, but the one uh. It recommended is the network administrator, a straighter position.
Can you, can we, give me a backtrack real quick?
Yes, we can.
Uh central dispatch operations increases, no increase this year.
They're gonna follow what the county does.
We always do.
So we do a five. Yeah.
Cost of living and salary, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
We, we don't have to put any more money into the uh into the operation.
No. No, it just.
They're not thinking this year we need an increase in the budget. Historically, uh we don't spend all of our salary budget at all. Because the vacancies are bad. You know, it's hard to keep the people there, so you've got a revolving uh set of people. So uh it, it was felt like the, the asset of living equal whatever the county does uh could be funded within their existing budget.
And then all the other stuff, the senior center and all that's rolled in automatically.
Yes, the, the ones uh have. It's already part of the base budget.
And nobody asked for an increase.
Okay.
All right, so we get down to uh any questions on the operations of I T before we get to our I T person?
I, I would still like to look on the I T side and see if there are any sort of contract opportunities for support in him. I think it's too much. Yeah, we all know it's too much for Dan. And whether we throw another body at it internally, I mean, we tried that two years ago. And we're still kind of in the same boat we were at two years ago. Nothing against image, the guy comes and they leave, and then right back to square.
That's we looked at, we're, we're down like four or six positions that we should, should have on. Uh now, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I think it's extremely important to fund this network administrator person. Uh I all think it, so think it's extremely important that we look at contract services to support that and see what's out there. We can fund that uh as soon as we find someone that we have money in our I T projects fund that we could use for that purpose at any time. Uh we go out and R F P for that or whatever, as Commissioner's suggesting, I think it's an excellent idea.
Miss Patricia, one of these in here, I don't remember, it was in the old book, in my other book, where Dan had said the increase went from X to like a hundred and some thousand dollars.
I think that's this uh, the fifty five to the forty five, maybe?
Yeah, if I step back up to the second one on page two, you see that he initially requested fifty five thousand. Uh that reduction he referred to this morning in his presentation, the recommended amount based on that uh. Revised estimate is forty five versus the fifty five.
Yeah, okay, that's where we're, that's where I go, hundred and twenty five.
Yeah, he and, they gave me the wrong, uh, few numbers.
So, so that number is revised. And of course, the network physician, network administrative position, that person uh. Have a skill set that would allow uh hopefully in cross-training and some of the other areas of his. And then get someone in the administration, so I think it's a very positive move forward. Uh county clerk, uh two items were removed. Uh the twenty thousand, uh Carrie indicated she wanted to postpone consideration of that. And then on the jury supplies, uh there's, the, it was intended that there would be an internal move that would fund that. So there would be a thousand moving into that line item previously budgeted that county court at all. Uh and then the recommended uh uh Adobe license.
Yeah, then we just, then we just put fifteen hundred bucks a year on her for this printer thing, so does that need to be in here also?
Yeah, I was sitting here thinking about the uh uh. While I was on break and y'all were in meeting.
Yeah.
Uh I think uh one of the, the things we may do this year is set up uh a lease. And a lease payable will charge the initial lease, the hundred and one sixty three times sixty will charge that to our I T, I mean, our uh replacement budget, set up a lease payable on the books, which is what I'm required to do anyway for the financial reporting. And then we would budget in our budget on an ongoing basis, the copy cost. And she's going to try to figure out what her co- copy cost would be. Um but she's currently budgeting some money uh for the maintenance agreement on the one she's got now, so.
Okay.
Heads out and how much money we're adding.
All right.
Uh we definitely may, when we see we can't cover it, have to come back during the year and add.
Okay.
If you want to add to that budget. Okay, let's see, keep on going down, recommended uh maintenance. Oh, the thousand uh is Diana's request for the, the training uh. Training uh refreshments for the, the mandatory training, a thousand, that would add a thousand dollars to her budget. Maintenance uh, the generator maintenance, uh Larry requested fifteen hundred and sixty. Uh judge uh realized we're about to get more generators, so that number was increased a little bit to cover the two generators we're about to get. Uh operation and training budgeted at three fifty, which uh increases current a hundred and fifty dollar budget to five hundred. So that would be the amount of increase there. Uh county auditor, three thousand, increase in subscriptions. Uh the reallocation of the money when operating at salaries. Uh no additional cost to the county, but that's described uh in that line item. All right, and here is the hundred thousand uh which Doggett was referring to earlier. Uh there was a, a policy uh presented to court. Uh recommendation was to fund a hundred thousand a year uh into a new special fund. And then when it gets to the point where these people that weren't currently in our list, we would add them to the list, and then they would become part of what is this twenty six or twenty two thousand in the earlier. Uh so the recommendation is to do that in one time, to fund that from one time. Rather than building it into the tax rate, that certainly can be discussed. Uh and then it can be left alone as is, and the uh the one you're interested in added, or it could be considered an either or, whichever the, the court wants to go with that.
So I would like to look at it both ways, ongoing in one time, because that, that's what started all this in the past. Is it wasn't funded, so.
Yeah.
I think we need to look at it both ways.
Okay, and uh.
Twenty five.
Certainly.
Yeah, and then, and it would be set up the parameters on, on what, you know, years.
Yeah, you probably need to go ahead and put it on ongoing.
Okay.
I would, I, I would say for down the road.
That would be me, I mean.
I, I just, I don't, I don't.
I don't mind looking at it, but I would rather have it on long.
All right, consensus, do I have three or five?
You got two on this side.
Okay.
Yeah. But I do, I do have a question now that, that out of my memory, uh back to the twenty two thousand. Does that take into account age of the employee, because I'm pretty sure one of these employees is mine, who just rolled over twenty years. He's sixty two, we would have to pay plans to work till sixty five. So we'll have to, uh by the time he hits sixty five, he's gonna hit Medicare. And I'm assuming Medicare is the full blown insurance.
It is.
So does that take into account that?
Uh right now, if he, if he is one of these people and he is eligible, eligible for Medicare now, he would have been, twenty two would include his Medicare rate. If not, it would have included his non-Medicare rate.
Okay.
Okay.
It was looked at.
It was looked at.
So let me hold you real quick, so somehow tomorrow I turn sixty five, I'm not sure how that happened. Yeah, but look at there. Yeah, yeah, so I got a little ways yet, so I'll have my, my, my county insurance becomes a secondary behind Medicare, but we still pay the eleven hundred or something to our insurance, even though I dropped to a secondary?
No.
Okay.
No, every year when we have uh people that went on at pool and they change and go to Medicare rate, uh it goes down.
It's like I have like five twenty five, I remember, right, I kind of go up to.
It's about.
But if, but Bill, if you're still employed, our Blue Cross is primary Medicare secondary.
Okay, all right, I'm with you on that, yeah, okay.
Amy, how are you coming on those numbers from Bill?
I just emailed them to y'all, I didn't realize you wanted them on an agenda item, I thought y'all were gonna discuss them that way, but I just sent them to both of y'all.
Perfect, thank you.
But I have them, I mean, if you want me to, to tell you the difference.
Um, no, I think I'm a little bit more of a presentation.
Okay.
If we would, thank you.
Uh on a, a budget item or like during?
On the next, on the next agenda, because I like to, like you say, I like to lay them side by side, or like I say, I guess, I like to be able to say this is the benefits of the insurance, this is the benefits of doing a T C D R S lump sum option. And, and look at it, and I, and I think this is one that we, that we, that we poll the people and ask them. You know, we think, we have, we want to do something for you, we can do this or this, and what do you think? I, I, I would like to do that on it, and we cannot, we would look at it and say, of course, it came back as a tie. Because I know there's a couple of people over here that are kind of hard headed. So anyways, I think it's a conversation, I think it's a conversation, and it kind of goes back, I think, to what we were talking about earlier in another conversation about, you know, relating to your people and finding out what needs and wants they have and see what programs you can build around that versus we think this is best for you, so we adopted it.
I'm good with.
Yeah.
I think one thing to keep in mind that the people that already feel like they're going to get insurance. There, there's a lot of.
Right, so then along that same process, and that's, and that's why I want somebody here to kind of look at them, because if I'm me, and I'm sixty five, and let's say, and let's say I'm, let's say I've been here the twenty five years or whatever, not at all, right? And let's say I've been here the twenty five years, and they're like, gosh, you know, we can, we can carry your insurance for you from now on, and we'll toe the note. Or you can say, you know, you've been here twenty five years, you're sixty five years old, you're T C D R S. Um you were gonna make four thousand dollars a month, you can make three thousand five hundred dollars a month, and here's a check for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars cash. And that's, that's, that's a thought process for those people, it was for me, when I left the city, was a huge, like, this is awesome. If you're forty five years old and you've been here twenty five years, insurance, I don't mean hardly anything to you, you know? But if you're, somebody gives you a check for a hundred grand, that you can, like I said before, you can pay off your house, pay off your car, pay off your credit cards, pay off all that stuff. Well, it's a lot, it's a lot, but sixty five, seventy grand to somebody is life-changing money also. So that's why I say, they may, it may be like, you know, we don't want that, we want the insurance, and I'm fine either way, I just want to put both options out there and let, let our folks.
Going with the poll, because we need to vote on this next court, on that issue right there.
We got a little, we, we got.
You got two weeks.
Well, a hundred grand is a line item in here, it's not that much more to go either way.
What?
You still told us and asked what we think.
I know, I know where you're at, you're like, let's not do nothing. All right, I apologize for that detour.
No, it was. Uh going down, uh there's two has been added. Uh one is we are seeing very hard increases in our credit card fees, we've had the same credit card company for a while. They are continuously adding surcharges and fees and whatever. Uh we're probably gonna be anywhere from four to eight thousand over budget this year. We have a lot of our departments that try to recoup some of this cost. And of course, the recoup amount was based on the cost that they expected to. So I'm trying, I'm on page three.
I was just looking ahead, look for something that I don't see.
The uh. Lost my train of thought, but anyway, they were. To cover the cost at the time, there's a huge difference in cost now. And EMS does not charge any recruitment cost on there, so we're probably gonna need to add about eight thousand dollars to their budget to cover these. But uh I think it would be very good for purchasing to re-look at what our options are. And that the department has seen the difference in what's happening now and what was happening four years ago.
Well, no, I, I had this, uh on my personal credit card, it paid off every month, and I had a credit card that just charged me a bunch of fees. I shop with credit cards, and I've got one now that pays me three percent back. When I pay it off every month, are we in that same category? When I pay it off every month, are we in that same category or?
No, no, this has nothing to do with us, the credit card company paying us. It's that we, when we went under contract, the fees were certain amount that they charge us. That, it's not, yeah, they charged.
I saw some fee.
All right, now they're charging a higher fee. But in addition to that, they've added a nineteen ninety-five monthly charge and a twelve dollar discharge and a twelve dollar debt charge. Uh, so what it used to cost the county to take those credit cards, it's way, way more, and there's fees that weren't in the contract, they're not even listed in the contract. So I think that, uh, one, it needs to be studied internally by purchasing, but also we need to realize it's probably gonna cost just more. The, the next item, uh,
How do they charge us more if they're not contracted?
Like some wording in there says.
Well, what they do is they send a letter saying, we've added this charge to our customers. If you want to opt out of our, uh, service, send us a letter. But everybody in the county is under the contract. Like I said, purchasing needs to get involved, we need to ask for refunds on charges. It's a mess. And I think any business you talk to that takes credit cards could sing the same.
Oh, yeah.
Will sing the same.
That's why at the end of their ticket, now they're telling you cash or.
Yeah, typically.
We charge a fee for those credit cards, that's not covered.
Yeah, we probably won't charge three and a half.
Now, if we do three percent on all criminal cases and then it's.
So that's not the credit card we got.
No.
No, 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 the machines, they give us their credit card and we run it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and but now where a lot of places, and especially in our court system, if they elect to pay by credit card, they can go through a service and they log in to a third party service, and the third party this charges them to use it.
Cause we just upgraded that with Tyler across the four JPs of the district and the county clerk on case management.
All right, next item, uh, we just got a letter, uh, this, I think last week where our particip-, uh, our cost for the judicial region court is going up thirty-nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Yeah, it's on the salaries, right? On the salaries? Yeah.
Yes, or whatever they use in the calculation, but I think it's mostly salaries. Um, all right, and, uh, of course, the, the county court evolved the twelve and the two seventy-eight. A lot of that is discussion that we'll come back to there as far as the recommended budget. Uh, going down to the next screen, twelve, uh, it is recommended for that software that, uh, Judge Mormon was talking about today, uh, one-time cost and ongoing. They are asking, and I think they came to court, uh, early and asked for a, uh, a grant to help with that, haven't heard anything, so the assumption is that we would need to come up with that money. Uh, district clerk, three hundred and sixty for the Adobe. Uh, criminal district attorney, the LexisNexis, uh, the bone stipend for the coordinator. And then, uh, recommending the legal staff restructure, uh, that, um, they asked for. Moving over to the next, hey, we request this piece precinct, uh, you've got several increases through, um, the JP court uh, that are operating related. Um, judge asked, uh, us to get together kind of a summary of, or a comparison of how much was budgeted in each of, each of the courts for training based on the number of people and whatever. And did you get that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, there's that.
So it was just.
Probably.
So, so the, the only one that was, that Payne didn't recognize, so he wanted to get on that board, they do pick up his travel.
Well, I visited with mine, uh, Fisher.
He's, he's under budget.
Yeah.
Compared to everybody else.
But they were looking at sending, you know, I mean, obviously they need more training and it was running pretty close, so that's why they asked.
Cause he was like, yeah, he was at four twenty-five an employee and the other one great five something an employee, so.
Uh, going down to the sheriff's budget, uh, the, uh, position, funding the position that was approved in mid-year. Uh, Verizon data cards. And then, uh, the operations increase. Hey, I'm medical insurance, so I don't need for a, a company. Constable precinct two, uh, this is the allocation where it started off at ten, went to twenty during the current year. So this would, uh, allow him for his reserve benefit to keep that same, you know, the same level of service. Going down to.
I'll send it to you.
Scratch the card that was ninety thousand or three sixty-two. No, excuse me, that was constable, that was a different one. We'll come back to all work. And, uh, body armor in constable four, and then this constable four vehicle with.
That's so.
Yeah, and the reason I had asked him if that included the outfitting is that this one was more, so it made it, I'm not sure why that one was seventy-two was so best.
They shot down the, the other SRO officer?
Yes.
Haven't heard it.
Yes.
Gene told me.
But basically, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, there's, there's no on that fourth one.
Yes, ma'am, okay. And what's the difference in a possibly vehicle of a Tahoe versus like a pickup truck for a constable? We have two councils with pick-up.
Personal preference?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, it was some savings, yeah. Yeah, I don't remember how much.
I don't know what it is either, but you just, we got two that can do it with a pickup truck, why does anybody else need a Tahoe?
You wanted Tahoe, I remember that, that was their preference and, uh. And, and, yeah.
Our side always drives trucks.
It was just, like I said, it was a preference, I don't remember exactly.
Roads that they gotta have four-wheel drive. Sheriff, sheriff, thanks both.
Yeah, you got better roads.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why they in the shop all the time with the front ends, that's all right. I still got a better road.
Yeah, you might, I mean, you might run it back by them, but.
So like, if you're talking about the, this Tahoe cost versus this Tahoe cost.
Uh, it's not that much difference, you just put a police package in it.
You talking about the difference in.
I'm talking about, you know, we're paying a hundred grand, right? No, that's, that's what they're paying, well, we just paid what, ninety or something for jeans?
Seventy-two.
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 That's why I don't know why this one that Hill wants is ninety.
Because it's a Tahoe. Cause it has nothing, there's no, he has.
They're replacing one.
Dodge, Durango, Rango's or whatever.
Something about what Hill's wanting is, uh, and he doesn't do the new stuff or something, there's more in this one than this one. It should be in the back. The watch guard and, uh,
Yeah.
Stuff.
Okay.
And they know that some of that equipment that they have in there can be exchanged when they get vehicles. But if he's leaving the vehicle he's replacing in the fleet, then what a.
Cost difference.
If you need that equipment out. So it could have something to do as if that vehicle's going to remain in the fleet.
You're talking about Hill, right?
Yes.
He, he said something about he had to have new equipment, I can't remember what he told me.
Got one that's.
Yeah.
Ready to be pushed over a cliff.
It's, it's bound to be.
We did jeans today.
The vehicles at the sheriff's department come up to about seventy-eight, and you got, this one down here is at seventy-eight, and his is at ninety, so it's got to.
It's, it's equipment related.
It's got to be the, yeah.
The sheriff's going, is that for pickup or a Tahoe?
Five Tahos, about seventy-eight.
Man, I don't know any different, I don't, I don't have a, a good feel for the difference, but if it, you know, going to a pickup truck versus a Tahoe means I can buy five for the price of four.
Yeah.
That's worth it for, you know, if they're within five grand, then, yeah, you know, but if they're fifteen or twenty grand different, that's, that's a significant number. And like I said, Gary's driving them, y'all guys driving them.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why we, that's why we went to Durango for Jean.
Right.
And came over and tired of that.
That's because the Tahos weren't payable when he had, they had.
I know, I know, but he sold us on a Durango because they were so great.
Buy them local.
Buy them local, service them local, and we're saving this money.
Yeah.
That was his pitch at the time.
Yeah. So how many, so which ones are asking for a vehicle, just three and one and four?
No, we bought fours today.
Well, we forced that. I'll do that one down here, okay, seventy-eight went right to under, yeah. Okay.
We got the sheriffs and heels, is what we got left.
All right.
Okay, all right, so going up to the top of page five. Uh, on emergency operations, uh, the recommending the tower rent, uh, the increase, uh, module in the Orion system, which was approved during the current year. Uh, recommendation that the planner position go to from part-time to full-time. And then the other items are.
Who's the planner, is it?
So that's Humpty, so he keeps all those, the plans that we have to have done for all the grants.
Hmm.
He has to update those all the time, at some point, we're gonna outgrow him.
Yeah.
So I'm, my plan is to try to make that not immediately, because he doesn't want to go full-time. But start working that in for that office to grow as we grow. And keep those plans up to date, that's why that generator grant was so long, because the plan took forever. So I just want to keep our plans up to date, so we're eligible for all the grants.
Yeah. So here's a half-ton crew cab with an outfit for fifty-two thousand. That's forty thousand dollars less. It's gonna be close.
Isn't I gonna have the cage, the ticket rider, it's just a radio and a console.
So how much more is that, that twenty, twenty-three thousand dollars more for all that other stuff? I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like, it's not the police package vehicle either.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's some differences in, in the police package.
I'll visit with Steve, I'll visit with Steve about that, rather than, I'll just, I'll visit with Steve and see where he's at.
And, and it, it's, I looked at it.
Well, I've seen, I've seen it right up in there, but I'm asking, he does talk about a truck, he has this car.
Well, the truck's forty-five, six, sixty-seven base.
Okay.
We, we talked about it when.
For our full-drive crew cab.
And, and he would preference to the Tahoe, which, I mean.
With a widget truck, with nothing on it.
Forty-five.
Forty-five is base.
Jeans outfit with what, twenty-eight, is that what his was?
What page is that?
It's in our agenda that we just did today.
Going back to, um, and I, one of the things that was recommended, that funding on swing jury.
Tahoe is fifty-five, seven fifty-two. For ten thousand dollars.
So it's ten grand.
There was a recommendation, Diana, and I'm. As for two people and in the recommended, when it should be the funding of one of those peoples.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Diana.
Diana.
That's when I was looking for me, I did not see it.
In the recommended budget, there was one person included, uh, in the recommended budget, I'm not seeing that here. But, uh, I, that, that was included in the judge's.
Yeah, that's why I was.
Collections.
No, it's vehicle registration.
But it, it'll be worth it.
Other down on, on your list then.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that one yet.
Oh, we hadn't got there yet?
Not to vehicles now.
Oh, okay, all right, so.
That will page you on that.
All right, that's. Page five. Uh, we just did, uh.
All right, um, real quick, real quick, Ronnie, on, um, on Shane's reserve deputy.
Yes, sir.
Was he, was he asking for teams, I want to say I, that he was thinking that he was going to get his ten that he had and this request was for ten more.
I think that was his intent now. But we didn't put it in the budget last time, right? It was like one-time expense to see if it worked, so.
Yeah, so.
So that number probably needs to be the twenty thousand to cover the, the whole year.
I think that's what he.
Yeah, and which is still cheaper than employee by a long side, you know, so.
Yeah, so that number I think needs to go, I guess it should come from you.
Yeah.
He's your guy.
Come from Shane, but.
Yeah, I mean, we could call Shane in there, I think, I did visit with him on the phone and, and my, I think he thought.
He's getting twenty.
That the ten stayed in the budget that he had originally.
Yeah, they wanted ten.
But I don't think it does, right, Patricia, I think it's, we're talking about Shane. The ten thousand on Shane that we give him last year to try the person to help serve papers. That we pay that.
Oh, yes.
At one time or was?
Shane, Shane thinks he's getting twenty, and he needs twenty.
Uh, if the ten thousand was already built into the budget.
So it's still there?
There is another ten thousand added yet, this is an increment to that.
Okay, all right, so it is in the budget, I would, I stand to be corrected.
That's a good, that's good, yeah, a good thing to, not to miss, so.
Let's go back to page, and then we'll come back. Go back to page.
How many trucks they got? How many trucks you got?
Would have been after.
Y'all got three?
Yes, or probation, I mean.
Opinion is you don't need another truck, then we've got two brand.
Probation.
Plus the one.
Request.
All right, so where are you at now?
Back. Off this report when it got a friend in Diana. Two, uh, two thousand dollars in office supplies in the current year that was budgeted as one time. Did spend it, she's asking for that two thousand, uh, in her operating budget. And she asked for two deputies specialist, uh, uh, in the recommended numbers, there is, uh, one of those two positions is recommended for funding. So, uh, just wanted to, I'm not sure why.
Okay.
It put it here, but that was in the recommended.
Okay, and that was in vehicle, so.
That was in vehicle, yes. Okay, now let's go back to page five, we were in the, uh, emergency operations, we're just talking about the planner position. Going down to county jail.
Mr. Patricia, back up a little bit, on, on the truck. They've got three, well, two of them are pretty dang new, and the other one is. Then you, I can't see justifying another truck to me, but that's my opinion.
It's for discussion, Adam, anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, later on.
Yeah, yeah, it's not in the.
In the, in the judge's. Uh, sorry about that.
Oh, that's fine, uh, jail food, uh, recommended is the transport deputy. Uh, I wanted to give you an update also in that, uh, when Captain Dobbelo was giving the presentation, he indicated that there were trips that the transport jailer was making that could be billed. Uh, apparently the jail has not been billing for those. So, uh, we are working on a project to go back to your, see what was there. Have a meeting with, uh, two people from jails more to get through that. Also, the question was asked about, uh, that there were, if a jailer was held for forty, for more than forty-five days, you can bill the state for that.
Right.
That has not been happening either, uh, and we've gone back, we have staff, we've had a conversation with the state, they verified the monies there, it's about seventy-seven dollars a day. Uh, and that we could go back and bill to when the law was effective. So we're working through all those numbers and it's, uh, could be anywhere from five to twelve thousand dollars. So, uh, that was not being done at the jail, so we're working with them to get that process in place.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, uh, I, Joe met a couple of weeks ago and I had to leave, so I wasn't here on the transport, I know some of you had questions about that. So our office never requests a transfer, a transport for a misdemeanor out of state. In fact, we don't need the transport misdemeanors in state. We leave the warrants out there, but we don't go. So we're not spending money chasing those guys all over the country. And we evaluate carefully when it's a felony, whether we go or not. I, I'd, I'd say that more times than not, we do. Like, I'd, I'd say that more times than not we do because it's a felony and there's some, there are occasions where we don't. So we're only asking for transports. We do it judiciously. I know that was a concern I had and I, I know my boss spoke to that, but I wanted to elaborate.
One thing I asked when they were here was had they explored other opportunities other than just, once again, throwing another body at it? Had they looked at contract transport and stuff like that? I don't guess we got anything back on that, so.
We've not been involved in that project.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know if they contacted.
We need to move that over to discussion until they get something.
It's a no for me unless I hear something, unless we hear something.
So we need to move transport deputy over to discussion until they get some answer.
That's transport deputy, that's not for, that's not for going out of state. This is for from the jail to here.
They use those transport deputies for both of them.
I understand, but, but.
If they're not out of state very much, they're here available to move to court. And, and I think their thinking is. Partly they're having to go out of state, but also because there are a lot of court dates and things like that.
Well, and, and that's from visiting with them. That's the biggest part of their hangup is, is, is the amount of people it takes to move them from the jail to here.
Can you come tell us? Can you come show us that? That's what I asked them two weeks ago.
Okay, well, yeah, and, and I don't disagree. I mean, I'm just saying that, that a lot of the problem is, is the amount of people that are having to move up to here.
Yeah.
You know, so.
And I think they're having a lot more courts than we used to have too, so that's, that's tying up an officer back and forth.
And, and so I, I don't know, it brings up a question that I've had. The people that they're transporting is, I, I mean, with all this dang technology deal, why are we not zooming in from the jail? You know?
So, right. This would be a little bit of the judge's response and maybe the jail too. If, 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 if there's gonna be a plea, if, if that inmate is going to plead, they might be brought over. They can't do, can't plea on Zoom. And so all we ever ask for is the people that we believe we have a plea deal on. And so, uh, they. I would agree with you. I bring these guys if all is just gonna be, if there's a hearing or there's a plea, they need to come. Otherwise, they don't need to come. And both of the district judges are very comfortable with Zoom and they do, like when we're doing our. We call it our big docket, but the auxiliary docket.
Yeah.
A lot of times inmates are in the jail and in, like for arraignments, things like that. Um, the defense attorneys though can also ask to have their guy brought over. A lot of times they'll ask because they think there's gonna be a plea. Or maybe because they want to meet with them. Don't want to approve that request if that's the only reason, because they think the defense attorney should just go to the jail and meet with them.
Yeah, which makes sense.
And, and so the judges have been really good about that. So there is, there are a number of inmates who do make an appearance on Zoom. If it's like a pre-trial or there's no hearing gonna happen or it's. But if they, if they believe a plea is possible or likely, then that, they're coming. Well, they are trying to use the technology. I, I would say it's not a hundred percent right now effective, but it is being tried to be used.
How many of those lawyers are going out there to see their clients?
The judges are actually vigorously evaluating that and, uh, expressing that, that concern. And I'm, I'm gonna leave that alone.
They're busting them over here and then dealing with them, yeah.
Some of us could not go out there and see them.
Yeah, exactly. So y'all, y'all wanna move it over to the, to the discussion and let them bring the information in?
Right, that's what we're talking about.
The forty thousand, Mr. Patricia, on the food, I assume we went over nine thousand on our. Uh, meals at the jail this month, or slash bill pay, I guess going to enough? Who knows? I guess we know we've come back, though.
That, that's our best guess based on what we know right now. Um, a thirteen thousand for, uh, software and uniform budget, twenty-five. Veterans services, the recommended, the software increase. Planning and development, the Adobe Pro, uh, subscription to Zoom. The other items for discussion. Texas Ag Live, the, uh, twenty-five hundred for travel. Uh, fifteen hundred for training and then, uh, the computers. It's a little bit unclear where on the, well, never mind, yeah, that's one time. It's a little bit unclear on whether. Uh, our share would be half of that amount or all of that amount. But, uh, it's kinda hard to tell, but it's showing at the thirty-seven, but it may be actually half that amount.
A and M picks up.
So, um. The two changes I made as we were going, the three, uh, one moved a hundred thousand over to ongoing from one time. Move the ninety-five to discussion and add Diana's two items in. So we can, is there anything else you want to move out? And then we'll start going back down the list and focus on, uh, the ongoing and the discussion. And go from there. So are you pretty comfortable with this support?
Patricia, up here at the adult probation, what was all this stuff? These card readers, they, they got card readers.
So that's the security tag ins for the doors.
Yeah.
And then the other ones, these buttons.
All them panic buttons that they wanted in every.
I live in a panic. I don't need a button.
To me, it's already a secure building. I don't know. I'll have to go back and look at what she asked.
Who was asking? Oh, that, yeah, yeah.
And it may be, I think that's something that's marked in green.
It's to come back to talking.
They can come back to court and if, if the court wants to fin, uh, uh, fund it. It can come from current year projects funds.
She said to come back next court.
Next court.
Okay.
Very good.
So these ones in green, they've all been sending an email, most of them.
Show back.
Show back up and come talk.
Okay, so let's kinda go down the list, um. The first item, of course, is, uh. The insurance plan, I think we discussed that and everybody got comfortable with that. The, what we want to do about the countywide pay, uh, was something to be discussed. So if I wanna put that one off for now, you can, or if you're ready, discuss it, uh.
I stay ready. That, that's the most important anyway.
Yeah.
As our employees, so if we don't, you know, that may hinge on what we do somewhere else. That's kinda where I think we need to be. And personally, I don't, you know, I don't think the thousand is enough to cover. The cost of living raise that we need to give. I don't know what that number is, but I don't think it's enough. And whether we need to do a percentage in a flat like we did before, or whether we just need to increase the flat and all.
Could you put us some stuff together like a one percent, three percent, three percent?
Okay, um, yes, it's, it's basically put together for you.
It's already on the page.
Oh, the one percent is one ninety-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
One percent. It's a hundred and ninety-two thousand, so. Want to do a one and a half, you would just multiply that.
Well, we're already having some serious problems maintaining the employees that we have. And if we don't do something for them, I mean, you stand a chance of losing our existing employees.
Percentage, it makes any.
I understand. It does.
So if someone's making twenty thousand versus someone making a hundred thousand, that person make a hundred thousand is gonna get a much higher pay.
And, and I, I understand that totally. I mean, we've had that discussion, I think, just about.
Hundred times.
Every time we've ever had a budget, we've probably gone through that, but.
Trying to look up the little man.
Two and a half, two and a half percent is four hundred and eighty-one thousand.
But if you don't do it that way, then our salary study may. And that's why we always figured in the, the.
Yeah, they.
For the one time, to at least cover the insurance.
We basically do a percentage in the past and then enough to cover the insurance also as a flat fee.
Correct.
Which that pretty well protects the salary study, I think, in a way, but. I, and I don't know what the number is, but I, I know that ain't enough. I mean, I know that just from going to the grocery store. You know, that won't even.
Our dependent coverage is what, right now? Eight seventy-five or something?
No, it's five something.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
I don't have it, so I have no idea.
I what?
If I remember correctly, it's roughly a four hundred and eighty dollar a month increase. Amy, you still on the?
Was that?
Yes, she's on.
What was this question?
The, the increase, how much it was? I think, I think it's four hundred and eighty something else.
All right, so we, so we say a base of five hundred dollars per employee across the board.
Okay.
And then we do like two percent on top of that. Let's, let's do some math on that real quick. That would be three hundred and eighty thousand. Plus a hundred and eighty thousand, right? Am I doing right on that?
Yeah, they just remember, this is just a general fund. We got road and bridge and, uh, EMS to go. So if you take that down to half, that's a hundred and fifty-eight, two forty-three for the.
Right. Yeah.
One fifty-eight, two forty-three.
Three eighty-five.
What y'all doing? Five hundred plus two point five?
Two point five is four hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Amy's.
Family coverage would increase five thirteen sixty a year.
Five thirteen.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right.
And I don't see much needing adding them employees if we can't make, they don't want to forget, you know?
And like you said, we've always kinda got through the budget and what was left over, like, oh, what, what we're gonna do for the employees. And for a lot of years, it was, well, sorry. It should be the other way around.
Yeah, it should be where you start.
Yeah, absolutely. So, all right, so the math would be five thirteen plus two and a half percent. What was your number for two and a half?
Four hundred and eighty-one thousand, three ninety-five.
Yeah, you're getting close to spending some money there. And then the, um, the half was a hundred and.
Half a per.
Well, you have the.
Uh, one fifty, two forty-three is five hundred.
Okay. All right, so, so that's on top of that forty-one. So we call it a hundred fifty-one. Five dime, three, two, three, so six hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Forty-three, five, five, five hundred. That's three hundred and forty, we stones, five, five, it's ten. Hundred and fifty-four thousand and forty-nine.
No, that's fine, Mr. Patricia. Uh, it's, it's early on.
Yeah.
But I think that's where we need to go.
Need another.
Yeah, I mean, I can't move past this till.
I'm not adding employees though until we figure out. What we're gonna be.
Where y'all at on percentage?
Well, shoot for two percent and see what that works out. What, what are you figuring it out, two percent?
Well, two, two and a half, I mean, two would not be terrible.
Well, shoot, shoot, start with a two and a half, let's work for me.
Two and a half, we just did the numbers, about six, it's about six fifty. We got three, we got three sixteen. Sitting over there.
And that, is that everybody? I mean, that's.
That's six thirty-five.
Uh, another one ninety-one is, I'm, my, my guess is that you're probably talking about, uh, three quarters of, uh. Of point seven five on the tax.
On the tax.
To do a two and a half plus, plus the, uh, five hundred.
Thirty.
It's six thirty-five for general fund.
Yeah.
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 Probably bring us out to about one point, uh, seven five cents tax.
That's where I'm at. I think it's two and a half percent plus a five thirteen. We get that number, we go through what we got. And if we have to hit the tax rate to make it work, that's just a cost.
Well, if, if we can't maintain, I mean, you're not gonna function as a government anyway. I mean, so you got to get to the point where you maintain your employees.
Exactly right.
You know, I'm two down and one fixing to go, so I'm looking at your shop and your shop and your shop.
So you got nothing I'm putting to?
Ally, can you drive a maintain? Don't look at mine.
Stay away. If you showed her, say no, right?
I ended up working all day Friday, for our biggest part of the day.
And that's, I, I, I think, I like that, I like that jumping out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's start with that and then we just see what it takes to make it work.
Longevity is more now too than it used to be, so that's another thing for employees.
Yeah.
So we can figure it out.
Longevity is more.
Yeah.
For those that stay longer.
I mean, I'll go soon. Kim?
So in, of the six forty.
Employees of, oh, don't figure.
Yeah, we need to.
Bridge on any.
Right, yeah, we'll get that.
Kim, can you calculate that for Ms. Patricia?
This number's already in your budget.
Let me make sure I'm understanding what I'm calculating. I'm calculating a two and a half percent. And a five thirteen flat, is that what y'all said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, I will, uh, put in a spreadsheet and I will send over to Ally shortly.
Okay.
And that's for all.
Yeah.
Employees, not just general. Yeah, we need road and bridge and.
Everybody.
Right. Yes, sir. Yes, I, yes, yes.
Yeah.
But there, wouldn't there be stuff other in the budget to cut to offset that if that's what y'all decide to do?
I'm sure there, there's some in there, but we gotta know this number to start cutting. In reality, like I say, I'm, I'm gonna hang with the employees. They're the most important thing we got anyway.
And then if there's anything left, we'll see on these employees. That's gonna be your biggest.
Yeah.
Biggest source of money.
What it always is.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, Kim will get us some numbers on that. All right, so one, the, uh. For that, uh, our contingency, the two hundred and fifty is, uh, an increase over and above what we've got now. Which will cover some of these items that, uh, that we only partially funded. Uh, the five hundred thousand is what we budget every year. My recommendation this year will probably go into the current year, five hundred thousand. Uh, probably go into a hundred thousand time the years over. And my recommendation for this year would be to transfer, uh, what's left of this year's five hundred thousand. To our projects fund for the contingency and then re-budget this five hundred thousand next year. For any emergencies that we might have.
So we budget, I'm just asking, what do y'all feel comfortable with it? I mean, I think there's point eight million dollars in the contingency fund right now.
I'm comfortable.
What's our, what's our, sorry, what do y'all want? I mean, five million?
You know how many grants we get up there?
Uh, I mean.
Y'all asking questions?
Yeah.
Asking questions.
My thinking on that is I'm very comfortable with that thirty, thirty-two, even dropping down to, to twenty-eight. Uh, as long as we're doing, you know, one-time money, not, not only. Um, and mainly we need the cash in the bank to fund all these rents. That, uh, next year, we've got a lot of brands.
On paying us back.
Yeah, I hope, you gotta have money on hand to do it.
I mean, we're, I don't know how deep we're in last year's stuff, probably several.
Millions.
We got eleven on the two CG, DGB, plus we got the five million from the floods. So now you get sixteen million.
And if they take a year to pay us.
I mean, I'm very comfortable with that number, but, uh, it, it needs to be higher than. Oper, what we need for operations, contingency, we need the money there to fund.
I like the thirty and above. Twenty-eight makes me nervous.
I'm comfortable with it.
So it's up for discussion. We got it at the top. It's the recommended of, uh, planning for future growth and projects.
Yeah, and this one, uh, this one probably needs a longer discussion as to, you know, what the core, uh. If, if you're wanting to put money aside for that and attach money to it, or just make sure we have enough money. In our projects funds to cover any cash outlay you would want this year. And I think, uh, but transferring that four hundred thousand, that's part of that, that gives us some money, more money in our projects fund. And then we have our one-time projects fund, uh, which, you know, we would budget for that to be available. So I'm thinking whatever cash we would need would probably be fine unless we're talking. In the multi-millions cash we'd need this year. Because I'm assuming a lot of this, if we're talking about true long-term planning. You're talking about financed, uh, not operating budget type things, so. Uh, generally, you would be looking at certificate of obligation, a bond issue, uh. Contracts, whatever that you would be covering through the tax rate, with any big projects gonna take the tax rate increase. And smaller project.
Oh, that's obviously gonna be a big project and, and anything we can put into it without hindering us too bad.
My thought was kinda at the end of the budget, we kinda looked where we're at on a tax rate. If it's, hey, we're at one point seven eight. Let's take that little bit and make it two and carry that over to maintenance or something for a long-range plan. Just, just some kinda thought on, we're starting to work something in, so.
Well, and if it ends up being just one-time money, then it ends up being.
Right, anything's anything, better than anything, so, cause you can buy down debt with one-time money and all that, so. I just wanted a place marker, when we get to the end of the budget site, talk where we're at, and say, hey, what do we actually feel comfortable with putting on the tax rate?
So.
And, and of course, the how, the county does not have a long-range planning document.
Right.
Which um, may kind of be the first step in this, get, to get the study, get the focus groups, uh, get the participation from the elected officials, community focus groups, and literally put together a formal, long-term plan.
You stall out to twenty twenty-seven, right?
No, they're gonna be chairman of it, gotta be done, gotta be done before you leave.
Yeah, if you stall that, Mr. Trish, I appreciate it, see, I, I've been pretty nice my whole time here, you know?
Everybody.
I don't comment on nobody.
Nope. They don't have nothing nice to say.
I popped on pedal black on this side, so.
I guess I shut up.
So going uh, down, uh, the pretty much down to hey, that kind of takes through page one, page two. And under our discussion column, is the other uh, positions that was asked for in uh, IT. Recommendation is, of course, for our network administrator, that's in the, what y'all approved to include today, and then our other positions that are there.
I know.
We're over here till he gives us something on help desk.
Yeah, cause we know anything about help desk, he hadn't brought us nothing for that.
Okay.
Talked about maybe making that kinda like we did the jail, we'll put it over here for discussion until they bring some more information on the help desk person.
I'm sorry.
Talked about doing that, like the IT guy, kinda like we did the jail, we'll move it, hold it for discussion until he brings us some more information on help desk.
You know about the network administration, I really.
No, the, the, the help desk person.
Oh, yeah, that's all down here in discussion already. Yeah, so.
We need to get Dan to bring something back and.
Whether we're gonna outsource it or.
Just some ideas.
Literally, it's probably gonna take a while to get some information together on that, uh, the, what, what, what option may be is let Cheryl get together, have Dan looking to see what's out there, and then we got one-time money to uh, to fund either one of these now, so if, um, if the research shows that what's out there is what we think's out there is not out there, or if we're better off with the other, then that's always something that could come back in out of our one-time money for this year. And then postpone, uh, actually adding one of these other people to next year through the tax rate. You've got a lot of options, doesn't mean you're not gonna do something, but we would do it.
As he feels.
Projects money for this company.
So if we can, if we can get a help desk, program for sixty-five thousand, we just funded for one time.
Mm-hmm.
Still here.
And if not, if you had hired this person internally, then you could do that from that one-time money also.
Just build them in.
Yeah. I mean, there, here's, right now, we've got uh, Dan and two people in that department, right, Dan?
Yes.
Correct. Not, but yes, there's.
Okay, and then, um.
He's got her open.
Yeah.
And peaceful.
Four people, really, whether we have a contract or not, we probably need four people in, in the workforce in IT.
Yeah, I think your bodies in agreement, if we can add this administrative position, financially, if we can add it, then that's probably one of the top ones, I would think.
Yeah, and I personally think it's a critical to have a second person in there that internally that's trained on that system for attrition and training and walk term, I think.
I, I don't disagree.
And I know we.
We need somebody in there to help Dan.
We had, we had the one intern last year, and they're trying to expand that, and we're gonna go meet with Sam Houston about getting some more interns through the department, so maybe they can kinda help some freebies on.
Help this.
Help desk people.
Yeah, well, you kinda need somebody that if Dan walked away today, we'd have somebody in there.
That's, that's.
That person needs to be there.
Yeah, and cross-training is a critical component.
Say that, yeah. Uh. Okay, so next.
Okay, um, all right, so we go down, uh, okay, uh, the twenty-five thousand, uh, here, this year, we did not have enough money in our general fund or, or special fund to pay the maintenance contract. This money, uh, is showing up, uh, basically, it would be covered from that contingency fund we created, if in fact, we run into that same situation.
Something on election.
Yeah, the twenty-five elections, um, basically, if we need it, we'll cover it from contingency, that two seventy-five we created.
Okay.
Uh, the forty thousand for the election cost, this is basically our election workers, uh, sometimes we need all of that amount, sometimes we don't, but we do need to budget it in one time, because we'll need at least part of that, if not all of it.
How often do we go back and, like the contract we just signed today, you know, and allocate the costs out, stuff like that, is that still staying pretty consistent as far as who pays what for?
They are, uh, and I think Diana has worked out her percentages that she's comfortable with, so, but um, the part-time election workers, so much of the percentage is the county. So we could build this into our budget, but it varies from year to year, depending on who else is participating in the elections. And so it needs to be budgeted, but one-time works fine for that purpose. Um, so going to, uh, the forty and the fifty thousand, the annex building, uh, air conditioners, and the, um.
Bruce.
Is this fifty thousand?
So Bruce.
Uh, we would transfer this money to the projects fund, and then, uh, the projects would be done on projects, and this forty thousand is just, uh, I think a third of what he thinks the actual cost is going to be. So that would be built over a three-year period, the other option is to, um, unfund the project, move it projects, and uh, let it sit there until the need arises, but uh, the three-year plan is for the forty.
In three years, one in twenty is gonna be one sixty.
But we don't, they're not broke right now.
Uh-huh.
They're not getting replaced this year either.
Well, they're broke pretty often, but they're permanently.
Yeah. So does he have a life expectancy?
He thinks.
Three years.
That's where you come up with the forty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
But like I said, you've all, you've still got fallback money on project contingencies, so.
Yeah, if it did break, uh, in the projects contingency fund.
Where forty thousand ahead are closer to paying for it than.
All right, uh, skipping down now to the uh, county court at law, the two seventy-eighth and the twelve, um, the court at law, what is uh, showing here with the zero number, probably need to talk about this one, uh, law passed where raises were given to the uh, district judges, and also the max supplement was increased from, uh, was increased. Uh, the county judge's salary is tied to the district for judges' salary and supplements. But uh, we currently have budgeted, uh, in that budget, there was money budgeted for uh, a judge at the time who was in a different salary bracket because of years of service in the field. So between what's budgeted there and the additional money that the state, I'm not thinking there's going to be any county money, but his salary, we can't determine that until the salary of the district judge's supplement is determined. Okay, so, it, it definitely needs to be a, a salary increase, but uh, we won't need any more county money to do that, but we can't set that salary yet, which we need to do pretty shortly in, in this process, because we have to advertise in the paper and advertise all the salaries, but no cost to do that. Um, what was also asked for, uh, twelfth judicial district, as he discussed this morning, talked about wanting, uh, increases for two of his people, uh, and of course, those same positions, uh, are in the, the county court at law in the two seventy-eighth, so the others are asking for whatever increases those in the two seventy-eight get for their people, so county clerk, the county court at law is asking for that, but a hundred percent of that would be funded by the county, so, uh, that's why it's in the, uh, for discussion.
Well, I'm a no.
Me too.
Like, get what everybody else gets.
Well, they don't match anyway, we said one hundred sixty-two, four hundred. I'm not following their thought process there.
It don't matter, it's a no.
It might be useful for us or something.
Make it simple.
Commissioner, I can, I can answer that for you, each of the judges came up with their own number.
Okay.
They, they didn't, they didn't need to agree, they just came up with their own number, that's not wrong, dude.
You can't blame them for asking, but.
I don't blame for. You don't blame me for, no.
Just don't blame anyone, I say no, my mama taught me how to say it like. Ain't my mama in this courtroom.
In the two seventy.
Oh, I was gonna be nice, wasn't I?
They're asking.
Pretty good.
This is the amount that will be paid for by Walker County. Now, one thing I will say about the district judges themselves' salary and the request for the increase in the supplement, the last several years, they were not able to get what the other employees got, because they were at their maximum. And if you've increased their maximum, then the state decreases their salary that the state will pay, so they really don't get any more money if you go above the maximum, but with the change in law, it does allow them to get increases.
And that's how much?
How much?
The new supplement cap is twenty-five thousand dollars. Previous, the current supplement cap is eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
So seven thousand.
Split among three counties.
By the percentage, right?
Yeah.
Well, no, it's, it's, they, they can decide this one, it's not necessarily a percentage. Uh, in the two seventy-eighth, they do it that way, I mean, excuse me, and one of them, they do it that way, and the other one, they don't. Because the twelve, they always split it, and the two seventy-eighth, they didn't, so it was, um, that one, the mall doesn't say what they have to do on a supplement.
Each commissioner's court in a district gets to determine how much of the supplement they choose to pay.
Well, and, and see, that's where a lot of times I get hung up, because there's no, no communication between us and the other two counties on what's going on, you know?
And, and, and I think that's, you're saying though, you decide how much of a supplement you wanna pay, doesn't really matter what the other two counties do, although I, I think, I think, I think you're right, I think it's the twelfth, the three counties agreed to do it proportionately, but there's no statutory requirement to do that.
Yeah, what Judge Mormon has asked for is, uh, of that increase, uh, Walker County's sent of that ultimate, of that increase he could get.
No, 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 I would figure that was the first, you know?
Yeah.
About a percentage.
Okay, so, we have any say-so on this?
Yes, yes.
You absolutely have a say-so.
Some of it, I know, you know, these judges like to dictate what we do, but if this is one of my say-so.
They give what everybody else gets.
Huh, they give what everybody else gets, the way I look at it.
And possibly make up for what they couldn't get, or what everybody else got in the prior years. Or just what everybody else gets, it's John's call.
It's what everybody else gets, is the way I look at it, Patricia. I don't know about the rest of them, but I'm fine with.
Okay, is that the consensus?
Yeah.
Well, you said they didn't get some in years past.
Right, because they were at the maximum, and had they got the increase the others employees got, it would have thrown them over their maximum, and that would reduce what the state would pay yourself.
But if you maximize this year and they don't get a increase next year, they don't get anything either.
Yeah.
See, if they get to the max right now, then they don't get nothing next year, most likely.
And, 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 and in hopes that the, none of the judges are, are listening or talking to.
This is Quentin talking now. I'll help you out.
Yeah, Quentin. Increase of the state is.
Fifty.
It is a healthy increase, they haven't had a state increase in many years. So the state's giving them a large increase, and based on the formulas, that's what increased the ability of the counties to increase their supplement. But, but they're gonna get a big pay raise this year, is what it.
Thank you for pointing that out, Quinn.
So would you keep him with everybody else?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
So, on the uh, twelfth and seventy-eighth, um, same thing.
So they get the same increase as their employees.
Um, okay, then, District Park, we're good with. Uh, criminal district attorney, the, what's in the one-time, is one of their quest, uh, request was to fund the victim assistance board. Should the grant not be funded, uh, it would have been eighty-four thousand, four ninety-eight, if it's funded, it's twenty-one, four sixty-two. So, uh, the one-time, uh, that's recommended is the twenty-one, four sixty-two, and that if for some unexpected reason the grant doesn't get funded, then they could come back and ask for that difference between one time, twenty, this twenty-one, and what, what they need to fund the position and what could make the decision at that time, that was one-time money.
And that's pretty well every year, right? I mean, y'all don't know till later on.
You know, we, we, we don't know, I know it's in the governor's office now, you know, it gives a big, it, it, the whole governor's office, and there have been years where they didn't tell us until after the budget year started, but it's usually sometime in September.
Yeah, he likes Walker County anyway, so, I think we're in pretty good shape.
A lot on that.
I'm helping you out, Quinn.
And sure, if they not get it, and the court did want to fund it, that uh, two hundred and seventy-five that we added that city could be used.
Yeah, and it's been a good position for y'all for a long time, so.
Absolutely. We will, as Bill has said many times, we will continue in the platform till they tell us no.
Yeah, keep up the good work.
Or give it to you permanently.
When I say my January's due, so.
And what is not, it's not a piece of paper, but the other one that would be in the discussion column, is Diana asked for two employees recommended funding of one, the second position, the we can, for discussion column.
Diana, I lost her.
She's not on that.
Oh, she's not even on the page.
It's, it's not on here.
We left her off.
But it was in there when we met, yeah.
Hey, that's okay. I'll leave it off my page until, because here's the reality of it is, until we get these employees funded, I'm a no on everybody that's adding employees, until we see we got the, the raises fixed, or where we at on that, so, then I'll put her on it.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're on page, uh, four.
I didn't see, uh.
Um, and the first one would be the. First one would be the um, the the vehicles for the sheriff's department, and I did change seven to five. Don't know where I dreamed up seven, but it was five.
Sally, if you want to go back to JP's, I pulled up that thing you sent me. On on the JP's, so precinct one. They revised budgets twenty two thirty four, they spent nineteen hundred and fifty four dollars. And they're only averaging four hundred bucks an employee, everybody else is at five thirty three. And then two, they're asking for increase, but that's gonna get covered if he makes the committee. He's uh, two hundred dollars under budget. Precinct three is hasn't even spent half of his budget yet, and he's asking for twenty five percent more. Precinct four has spent seventeen hundred of the twenty one hundred. Can we just fix JP one and make that five thirty three an employee instead of four hundred?
So the five hundred would become five thirty three.
So so each, you y'all y'all broke it down per employee.
Okay, so you're saying adjust this.
The other three have it. That's my suggestion, that'd be a hundred and thirty three, that makes them everybody equal, JP four is at five twenty five, and they'd get bumped up. To five thirty three also. And then make all of them the same. Precinct four, they're at five twenty five.
Consensus.
I'm good with.
Is that, they're not close.
Yeah.
They're only a couple hundred bucks and they're okay.
Alright, so sheriff, uh, the car the cars are in the one time. The for discussion, the twenty five thousand, the crime scene camera presentation software. Uh, was put over in the discussion column.
So some of this, I was hesitant, I'll bring it up, Senate Bill twenty two, they get a half a million dollars a year. Can some of that go over into that? I know we can't tell them to spend that, but. You know, I think some of the state's idea is to take some of that burden off of the taxpayers. I know they bought radios in your past. We just kind of took one of the cheaper things and I didn't put it in the budget, and asked them, hey. You buy it, we just bought them a sixteen thousand dollar trailer, you buy the camera.
There is option for safety equipment and equipment, like when we have to put in.
Right.
For the the audit part of it.
So that was kind of my thought on the discussion part, like you're getting a half million, can you pay twenty five for the camera? We'll pick up all your vehicles and everything else.
Yeah, but they bought a bunch of.
And they have a couple million in some other funds.
I think when he talked about this, uh, it was basically for the detectives and their investigation. Crime software to to aid.
I'd be more than happy to buy the camera and let them buy the vehicles. Either one.
I can tell you this, though, you can't tell them what to do with those funds, you can ask.
I I understand, that's why it's up for discussion.
You can ask. And that's that's about the limit.
I asked one year, it didn't go well.
The thing is, you know, Jimmy used to have a hangup all the time down there, and uh.
It was on the.
Yeah, something, I don't know what it was, but it was every time we dealt with it.
And they they've been good coming with the twenty two, you know, they were splitting us on cars on when they wrecked, I get it.
I mean, they help a lot with it, you know, but but it is technically their money.
They also added thirty five thousand dollars in services on radio.
That we understand, but you know, nine one ones is an important.
That's why I took the cheap one.
Yeah, so you took the cheap one. You did everything, you took the cheapest. At least you got the cheap one, right?
So.
Alright.
That was my thought on that.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, I mean, it's just, you know, if they'll.
Yeah, I'm I'm with you on the camera.
Yeah, I know Quentin probably is is.
I'm actually not even familiar with this.
Frowning on it, but.
No, no, I'm not actually.
Well, and and like I said, you know, I I think it was a good presentation on it.
Yeah.
And and you can't give everybody everything.
Yeah, I mean, we can't do it all.
Okay.
I say just ask them to do it and see if they'll do it.
So going down to uh, the next one uh. Would be the uh, bailers for the courthouse. Those are discussion items.
That's still on deferred to committee.
We said a date for that, yeah, I know about your calendar date.
None of, nobody matched up.
We better hurry up.
I know. None of the dates matched up. I'm gonna get dates from the two district judges.
I can make my decision, yeah.
Yeah, and I could probably move some stuff around, I'd watch them to choose from.
We still got a couple of hat.
Come back, yeah, okay.
So I was giving it to the day.
Who's on the committee?
Me and Bill, the two district judges, Tim and Clint, whoever won, and then the four constables. I figured I'd make Bill suffer since it was his idea.
Thank you, Bill. Oh, he's a good committee man, though. Bill represents me well.
Come on, riding on that one.
No, no, it was your idea.
My actions already know on the two hundred thousand dollars, so I'm going ahead and putting it out there so you know when you're dealing with them. Make them make them like the constables, because they've been there all this time, and they haven't been really much of a problem, I ain't gonna say it hasn't been a problem, because there has been some problems. But I've talked to a couple of them, I mean, the judge up there has not talked to them at all, that's a key factor right there.
Yeah, and I think that's as far our conversation is.
You know, so. Somebody's lying in, get them all in the same room, you.
Ain't no doubt, you know.
I've been in meetings with all of them.
Yeah, well, I've talked to two of them that said they didn't know anything from that judge up there.
I'll send you an invite when I showed up. Okay.
You know, I know, you know, I don't believe everything a judge says either upstairs, so.
Yeah.
There I am. I won't see them all in the same room, let them fight it out.
Yeah.
So you want to take my place, is that what you said?
I'm coming to watch.
Uh, was put in the discussion.
You're gonna get information from him? See if he'll buy one of them fifty two thousand dollar trucks.
Well, Mike, that was gonna be my question, only a ten thousand dollar difference, and it's one this year, we can get it behind us, I think we can get the information out next year to tell the people, hey. When you come, we we need more options other than just a Tahoe. So I I could one time that one this year.
I can get you down to six, seven, we've got, we've got five at the sheriff, one there and one there, they save you seventy thousand.
Yeah, and that's a free vehicle, right?
Yeah.
That's like buy six, get one free. I don't know if the sheriff. He he likes, like I see pickup trucks showing up there like.
One of them is your is your livestock cop, and the other one, I don't know what it is, but I don't know that they're actually.
They're not patrol vehicles.
They're not patrol, which is gonna make a difference.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, for for I'll I'll weigh in on that again. Patrol vehicles need to be SUV.
Yeah.
The a detective maybe could be in a pickup truck, a livestock pickup truck, the constables, in my opinion, could be pickup trucks. But a patrol. Patrol deputy is gonna be, he's gonna be that that closed compartment that.
Yeah.
He's just asking for a seat.
Yeah.
How about we ask you if he wants a truck, and if not, we bring it, it's gonna be one time, we'll do like party and bring it next quarter.
Yeah.
That's right.
I'm good with, I just, I know what he, he was had a purpose for a Tahoe last time, and and, you know, I mean, that's, it is what it is.
Still have that conversation and tell them.
Have it back when we started even buying the trucks for the costume.
Yeah, cuz I'll.
We'll move move it over into one time.
That's what.
If we come back to where it is. Then it's just gonna go down, it ain't gonna go up.
But I think it's a conversation going forward, is that. They should have to justify why the Tahoe and not a truck.
And he did last time, and and so he may need to reiterate that, if that's what he wants.
And get a color that he wants.
He's good with white with his.
Sometimes it matters.
I don't care, Gene gonna be used to it, but. I think we need to get a Volkswagen for Gene over there, see what he tells.
Alright, so if I'm hearing the consensus is to move that over to the recommended one time. Future discussions can be added.
Yes.
Alright, going down to Constable Ford, uh, so. If I'm hearing correctly, the fourth deputies of the.
That's what Jean told me the other day, Jean told me that the other day.
So the replacement vehicles is all the things. Emergency operations, uh, we have a quest for a rehab classification of the deputy. Uh, EMC. And uh. Mobile phone uh, increase for the deputy EMC is placed in the discussion.
Have you talked to, I guess you've talked to Butch about this, right?
For a second.
Just for a second. The only thing, the only comment I got from Butch when I asked him about this was the person we just put on, you know, is at the same pay grade that Sherry's. And his opinion is that this one, her position shouldn't be the same as is that position, so that's. That's the argument or his conversation, as I heard it from him, there's some validity there for what he does.
The. It was the same way before we hired the new person, and Sherry gets a vehicle also.
Yeah, but it was the same before, because we moved Sonya out there, didn't want to take her money.
But that's not my fault.
Right, well, I'm not saying it's fault, I'm saying that's how we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna. Take her out of a position and move her out of here, because that's basically, we just, we just put her out there and almost as a professional courtesy, said, hey, we're not gonna demote you. Financially, but the idea was when that job turned over, if the the salary was gonna go down. Now, I like what you did as far as getting a grant person, but I think I think that's a good person to have on board. But it, there's, there's probably a a conflict in her responsibilities versus. Sherry's responsibilities as running the whole program, when A, when Butch isn't there, and and the things that she does, so. I don't know if we can do the whole thing, but I think it's worth it to put some difference in there between the two. Just because of the responsibility, it's it's a lot, a lot bigger responsibility in Sherry's chair. Versus a standalone person with no employees that basically a grant hunter, so. That's just my two cents, just what I think.
True thought, true to Barbara. I I didn't suggest it, so.
Right.
This one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know where to go with that, and I don't think we're gonna be able to fund it anymore.
I didn't fund anybody else's.
Yeah.
Increase either, so to be fair.
Yeah, I mean, you've pretty well taken all the increases out, and. And I say, one, once we see where the numbers are, I doubt we'd be able to do any of that.
And that was my.
You know, that's kind of where I'm at, until we see what the pay raise does for. That column, I think it's gonna pretty well deplete everything else.
Yeah, I had to look back over, you you did call the pay raises that way?
Yeah, I didn't give anybody a pay raise.
And that's and that's a.
Yeah, I mean, I I I, and I, you know, I talked to Butch too, I mean, a little bit about it, but the reality of it is, we couldn't afford it anyway, I probably didn't.
Yeah, don't mind you for asking, you know, I mean, he had to ask, and I appreciate him asking, I wish we could, but you know, at at some point, it needs to be across the board.
We gotta deal with it across the board before we do anything, that's the way I look at it.
Ally, did you get, I had sent those numbers in an email to you, did, do I need to send them to a different, to not your email or something so you can get them?
Can you put it on the R drive?
Oh, yes, absolutely, give me one second.
That Miss Kim?
Enough, it's starting me.
That's the number we're looking to see what does to us.
Yeah.
And and Brendan.
From fifty to a hundred dollar. We got people who get thirty five dollars.
Countywide and subtract that from, subtract from that. Three sixteen four eighty seven.
Patricia, I'm sorry, were you talking to me?
Yes, uh, would you get a combined number of the two and a half countywide? Plus the five thirteen countywide total, and then subtract from that. Three sixteen four eighty seven.
Three sixteen four eighty seven, subtract from that, okay, give me one second, Ally, I moved it, but I'm gonna subtract this number for her right quick. Okay.
And then divided by uh. Six hundred, how? Six hundred is equal to a penny, how much additional do you need?
That's a word problem.
It's all for X.
So divide it by six hundred.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we're looking at it, we're looking at.
Fund the salary.
I love it.
You gotta take care of the employees, though, if you don't, yeah. Brendan, don't touch it.
Okay, so Patricia, I have the. Two and a half percent and the five thirteen flat for general fund, road bridge and EMS, I've added that together, I've subtracted out the three sixteen. And now you want me to divide that number by six hundred?
Yeah, so so give us those numbers.
Okay, so the total for two and a half percent and flat of five thirteen for general, road bridge and EMS is nine hundred and six thousand. Forty seven dollars.
Okay.
Then I, when I subtract the three sixteen four eighty seven, that leaves me five eighty nine, five sixty. And then when I.
Okay, that's really good enough, so we're we're talking about. Okay, thank you, Kim.
I'll invest in setting my people, I'll do it, absolutely, yep.
Ally, that is out on the R drive now. Oh, let me see, I might have it open, okay, I closed it, Patricia, also, I did notice, uh, sorry, don't mean to interrupt and budge in, but. I butt in, but uh, vehicle registration was left off of there, but so was purchasing and central courts. Ally, I did send you an email about, uh, showing you a snippet of what was left off. I can. Put that in a Word document and put it out there on the R drive as well.
Okay, that'll work.
Okay, so sorry, I I did.
There's the spreadsheet, the numbers you just ran.
As long as they weren't less.
I think central court was the lawyer fees and all.
Part time was recommended.
It's only five thousand, less than five thousand. Forty ninety five, public defender contract.
She's like, that's much better. Okay, so this is. I just read uh. What's included and what's not.
Well, okay, so the, on purchasing, it wasn't on the list. Where you had the highlighted stuff, the only list I found it on was the original list.
Okay, and the two things for purchasing was a part time person and a reclassification.
That is correct.
Yeah, and what the judge recommended was the part time person, and then again, since it was a reclassification. That was in the discuss column. Okay, and what was the other one, Kim?
The vehicle registration, of course, was the operations increase for the office supplies of two thousand. And then the additional two deputy specialist uh, ones in a pay group of one oh four for total for the two of one hundred and thirty six thousand five eighty seven.
Okay, and that was the one we discussed earlier, funding one of the. And was there anything else left out, Kim?
Yes, ma'am, the central co- uh, court costs, the, there was the increase for the public defender contract. Ongoing cost of four thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars.
And that was recommended.
Yeah, that's not much, alright.
And uh, Ally, I just put a, I put a Word document out on the R drive of those three, if they wanted to just look at that.
I'm opening it now.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry, y'all, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That was a good interruption.
Yeah, you can interrupt anytime, that's right, that's Kim. It's okay.
So it looked like that basically to do that, we're between one point seven five. And uh. So it looked like that basically to do that, we're between one point seven five and, uh, two percent. To, uh, do the two and a half. And then, um, the things that were originally recommended, we've added a hundred thousand for the, uh, retiree insurance. And, uh. We took out the, uh. Transport deputy. So that.
They're on hold, but you know, we need to get them back in there because to me that's more important than Cheryl's part-time. At this point, whether we can fund all this, I mean, I don't know.
Um, couple of things we can do. One, if y'all want to recess to tomorrow and come back and discuss general fund again, I can put all of these new numbers in. And get you some updates. In the meantime, we'll see if Dan can get my computer to work. Um, and then kind of go.
And could you, could you bring it back and maybe go whatever, but I'd like, if we're gonna, if we're gonna one, one and three quarters of a cent, I would, I would, I think we come back at two cents. Just bring the numbers back with a two cent increase and see how that makes our budget work. We can roll it back, but if you come with two cents, then we know what the big number is. And we can say, no, but you know, that extra quarter of a cent is a hundred fifty thousand dollars to us and that could make a difference. It might be the transport debit.
Might be.
So I think that's, to me, that's.
No, I'm good.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that either. That's fine.
Um, if y'all would like, we can, uh, talk a little bit about Roden Bridge and EMS.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh, Roden Bridge, uh, what was, uh, requested? Uh, what's in the rec, the recommended, uh, is the, the two hundred thousand. Uh, and the, uh, maintaining the benefits and all of those things. What was, was left over, open for discussion is there was a request to, within the departmental budget, the money added to be able to change the, uh. Or lead support person that does all your paperwork to be able to reclassify them to something, uh, kind of move and get their salaries in line with, uh, what one of the departments has. Brendan, you're the one that has.
Yeah, I had requests, yes, uh, both, uh, two, three, four. We're, uh, uh, beyond the midpoint, paying beyond midpoint. If we reclassify the midpoint. Going off memory here, but it doesn't cost us anything. So I've got money still left in my budget from when Brendan was there, right? She'd been here for forty three years. Her, her, she was up there further. The lady that I hired in now, she's, she's pretty low, but yeah, she's doing all the, all the jobs of what they have always done. She needs to be getting up there paid where you guys, uh, se- uh, secretaries paid or administrative assistant or whatever.
Secretary.
Whatever you want to call it. Uh, she needs to be able to get there. I can't get her there because we're in a. Uh, administrative assistant.
So we need to reclassify basically to a position that meets the money that you, we all got.
That, that we all, I've got budget that can't give to my person. Y'all are already there. And then James Ray's an operator, so he's in an operative position. But whenever James Ray decides he's gonna retire or whatever, if we make this across the board, then Danny can hire into that. Or, or the kind of person you need to hire, right?
Yeah, I mean, what, so what's the position? Have you researched it enough to know what that is?
I didn't think we was getting into this today. It's instead of a office administr- uh, office administrator, it's office.
Coordinator?
Coordinator. Uh, it's, let's see, I would, I can get it. It's in our backup here.
Okay.
Uh, it should be in our backup, right?
It should be. Kim, can you look up, uh, what we're talking about?
It's a change office administrator position to an office assistant.
That's pay grade what?
I think it's one oh eight. Out of classification, office administrator pay group one oh three to administrative assistant pay group one oh eight.
That's just court. Hmm, that's just a court deal, not budget, huh? They don't cost no money.
I was told. Pay classification system, which is adopted and the allocation of, so it definitely would need for approval through this process to do that.
So it's going from a one oh three to a one oh eight.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Re-class.
It's a reclassification. We've, we've already got the money in our budgets.
Already got the money in our budgets.
Because they're paid above.
Yeah.
In the, in the position you set there.
Um, the other thing that was asked for was that. That two hundred thousand dollars that we've done the last several year increase in the, uh, departmental budgets, that there be a four. Thousand dollar increase, but if the, uh, fees are going to be increased, then that certainly would fund that, that increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I wouldn't take that two hundred either either.
No.
Leave the two hundred, then add the ten dollar fee to the deal.
Yeah.
And I.
Seven hundred thousand.
Yes. If, if we're gonna do the five hundred thousand, if that's the correct number, which I hope it is the correct number. I would, I would see, my, what I would throw out there would be like a hundred thousand theoretically per precinct. And, um, the, the last hundred thousand that we transfer from general fund. Put it back in general, if we could do that.
Put it back where?
Let general fund have that hundred thousand, then we take four and that puts a hundred thousand dollars back over there. That normally transfers to us as part of that hundred and fifty thousand that week.
Okay, let me make sure I'm understanding.
I didn't follow you, Bill, but go ahead.
Be ready, we're gonna, we're gonna try, we're gonna find a half a million dollars.
Tops would generate four hundred thousand.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
It's the right one.
You're saying put, uh, four hundred into.
Road and Bridge.
Road and Bridge and let the hundred be a hundred thousand less that would need to come out of the, the tax rate.
Yeah, it would go back into.
Yeah.
Into general, but yeah.
I'd rather you just take the hundred and put it in the road and bridge general fund.
Are you talking about the increase on the fee? I think it's designated for road and bridge only.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Differently, but that's.
Ain't necessarily as parks or whatever you got.
Yeah, but like, like Bill's saying, we're taking two hundred, we're taking two hundred out of the texture right now.
Right now.
Bill, we're building in two hundred every year.
Transferring it in.
And you, you don't need to take that out at all, cause you, y'all guys are so far behind, you'll never catch up anyway.
Yeah.
So anything you can build in the tax rate is there and then that, that way if your one-time money dries up, which it might. You know, you keep spending these grants, it might not be nothing.
All right, I didn't quite follow that. Tell me again.
Well, I, I don't want to see that the, uh, tax rate part go away.
The two hundred that you build in tax rate, leave it there basically. Oh, they just stay.
You know, leave it in.
Not here, that'll stay.
Yeah.
Talking about the portion you would need to increase it by for the cost of living raise, we would not move a hundred thousand of them over there because we're adding four hundred. Yeah, I'm with you.
Leaves it in general fund and I would still leave it at two cents and leave that money, let that money stay over there. That's a way to get back to some of these things that we can't get to. I mean, it's, if it's, if it is five hundred thousand dollars, then we need to confirm that to be sure that's the number, which, because there was two line items. One was not so much and one was five hundred. Finally, but it's, it's, it's five hundred grand that's, you know, it can change us if we pick up a hundred grand apiece. And I'm not necessarily opposed to, like I say, even putting in road and bridge general if we need to, cause we, we gonna have to have some equipment over there one of these days. We got stuff on it.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to that general, going in general either.
So let's, so can we, let's, let's confirm, are we gonna come back again tomorrow? Is that the plan?
Uh.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, let's do that. That's cool.
I, I have HGC tomorrow.
And I have a grandbaby being induced at eight o'clock in the morning. Come on.
We can only go one day, right, Quentin?
Correct.
Uh, what about a meeting next Monday?
Say Wednesday this meeting's, or this room.
I'm out of town. I got a conference.
Well, yeah, the rest of us make y'all's decisions. Y'all just go.
I'll help you out, Brendan. You know, we always take care of the one that ain't there.
Yeah, you're here, right? Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Normally we're back by around, I've got nine one one meeting tomorrow. We'll probably be back around about two.
You always zoom in, let Russell drive.
We're just telling him to take good notes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, just tell him, hey, I ain't gonna be there tomorrow.
Yeah, trust me, I'll vote for you.
I can do three, but I can, yeah, you know, I can do three. I.
Can you have Marion or somebody come down?
But I've got people also, Marion's the only one upstairs, so I don't know what I'll, I don't know. I'll have to figure something out, but. But yeah, I mean, we'll figure it out. If I have to drive back.
Try and get numbers or anything.
Just gotta have time to put it together.
You have to be back, you guys, from my office.
Well, if it don't work, you can do it next Tuesday. You're, well, you're gonna be gone all next week.
Tomorrow is fine. I'll just drive back, do this and then drive back down.
Well, I mean, we, or we can advertise it, uh, and have a meeting.
Friday. It's Thursday. We can get it in by Friday. We can try that trial basis out. I'm moving court to Fridays.
Yeah, that ain't gonna, that ain't gonna show up. I might not be here this Friday.
Yeah, I can be here.
I just gotta push.
I could absolutely do this, right? I could absolutely.
I was supposed to be somewhere else, but.
We can help you out too, bro.
I know you can.
Tomorrow's fine if you don't do tomorrow.
I'm good for tomorrow. That works for me.
It's a forty five minute drive. I can.
It's the first one. It's your first grandbaby.
Being induced, I don't know if she's even gonna deliver tomorrow.
But what if you're here and she gets delivered? That's not.
Well, it is what it is, you know?
Can't Marion come in for you?
She's the only supervisor upstairs. I've got people that are already out and to their dick, so we're kind of stuck. Tomorrow is fine. If y'all, if y'all can do tomorrow, I'll make tomorrow work.
I can do tomorrow. Brendan, just, you know, I'll, I'll take it for you. Trust me.
I hope so.
We're not gonna, we're not making life and death decisions in the final decision mark.
To go back to Bill's deal, I'd like to see the two hundred stay. If we're gonna move, if we're gonna impose that fee and it comes into road and bridge, I mean. I, I'm with Ronnie. We're so far behind. If, if there's a chance to put a half million dollars in road and bridge, we split that four ways.
I'm not opposed to that by any means at all. I'm just saying on the general fund side, we're still quite a wish list over there. That if we're looking for ways to get there, that hundred thousand.
I, I just say that wish list may have to go to the wayside sometimes.
Hundred thousand ain't gonna help much.
Hundred thousand ain't gonna help a whole lot over there.
There's a lot of wishing over there.
Bridge only.
Yeah.
But transfer.
Yeah, that, that fee's gotta stand.
Well, we, we do six hundred thousand transfer from.
We transfer, yeah, six hundred thousand in from general.
You just do five hundred then.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
So it's definitely there, so.
Just make sure y'all.
We'll just plant that little seed. If, if we didn't go there, it didn't go there. And I hope it comes back. It's five hundred thousand, which would be awesome. And then we come over to road and bridge and that would be great. And if it all stays over there, I got no troubles with.
I didn't figure you did. You come around pretty quick though.
Well, but I'm, I'm also looking at these first five pages.
I know, but sometimes, you know, you just have to make some tough decisions and then they just have to be left out.
Okay.
We got a truck in the shop now, don't we?
You what?
Do we want to keep it?
Truck in the shop now, don't we?
We're gonna go over, uh.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead.
EMS.
Yes, yeah, I think they, they.
Finish this.
Which one?
Uh, let's finish up Roden Bridge. Uh, the other thing that was asked for was, uh, one time dump trucks.
And I, I put this on to have a discussion. Now, your five hundred thousand you're talking about? We wanna take some of that and put it towards, uh, capital by, by a dump truck a year. It's going reverse over this time, so I'm, I'm needing to pretty bad.
Actually, Bill. The hundred thousand be your money anyhow. You do what you want.
Yeah, and that's fine. But the point of that was to, to have a place marker and have a discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
The only thing I was gonna bring up on that, we have in, uh, road and bridge general, we have a fairly large contingency. Uh, we also have a contingency in the waste station operations budget, uh, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars. So if you don't want to keep that big contingency in, uh, road and bridge general, or if you, in the waste station operations. Uh, if you don't want that, I, I wanna say it's a hundred eighty thousand, but it's well over a hundred thousand. There is some money there that could, uh, be used for equipment or whatever. I just wanted to bring up the fact that money was there.
Yeah. He thought it might, but on the road and bridges, road and bridge general, we gonna need a reclaimer one of these days.
Yeah, you need to let that money build and be the best you can.
Distributor truck.
Because everything in there is high dollars, nothing cheap in that little lineup of equipment set.
Yeah, I like that one to kind of gain.
Yeah.
Right, so my takeaway on road and bridge is that we do some additional research on the ten to twenty dollar fee, how much money's coming in. Uh, we postpone funding any dump trucks from this and, um, we go with what's here.
Absolutely.
All right, all right. EMS. Uh, basically on EMS fund, all the requests, uh, with the exception of two, are included in the recommended. That includes the, the capital, uh, remounts and then the equipment. The two items that were last for discussion was the employee changed the office administrator to a division chief of clinical services. And the ten percent pay increase county, uh, the EMS fund wide, uh, in the budget. So those two.
That one's definitely can't happen, so. Uh, ten percent's completely out. The other one is.
It's basically from what I'm understanding, well, y'all are a presentation, but it appears that her.
Forty seven.
Basically, office person would be moved to this position.
Yeah.
But unless y'all, unless I read it.
Well, I think that one.
Seven come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one there, we, we just have to look at it after you give us the final numbers. At this point, I don't see how we can do it.
There's, and I, I don't know who knows how to get that. Is there, there's no other ways in our EMS department that we can get more revenue from that department? Because I know we can't do this, but we can't keep hemorrhaging employees, not filling, we hired a quality employee that we hire. And they don't, you know, the good ones leave immediately and go to Montgomery County. So there's, there's nothing in there that we can do on rates or, or charges or whatever to, to ramp that up a little bit.
They showed me five hundred and three dollars to ride two miles.
Yeah, the rates, you can go up on the rates, but our primary payers are only going to pay so much.
Sure, it costs, yeah.
Uh, so, uh, I think that when we, you know, every year our, uh, billing agency makes recommendation on the rates. And so we're billing their latest recommendations. You could ask them to review it and see if there's any rooms for them. I mean, any room for adjustments there, but normally the rates kind of fall back to private payers, which is.
Taxpayers.
Well, well, and taxpayers, but I'm saying if you go up on rates, you're basically shifting that to be the private payers. Insiders don't pay what they're paid, others don't pay, okay, what it's gonna pay. You can, these can pay what it's gonna pay. So rates are a hard one. Uh, the other funding sources, cross rates will not pay cost of the, it's, it's a taxpayer-supported.
Yeah.
Function, so the only thing to do is raise taxes. Although the tax rates we've got right now, as long as we maintain the status quo, do the cost of living, it's pretty healthy for this year. Now, you know, two to three years. Tax rate again, but, um.
On the EMS side.
On the EMS side, yes.
Yeah, I mean, this is basically.
Like there were two, three years.
This is basically a penny again for them to, to make what probably realistically needs to be done, but we just can't afford to do it, you know? But like I say, they, when they post their applications, they get nobody. We take them right out of school. That's who we, that's who we hire, is that entry level person. And we spend six, eight months teaching them to get them to be an advanced life support provider and then twenty six miles down the road to get a thirty thousand dollar a year pay.
But Bill, you tell me which department ain't luck yet.
But Bill, you tell me which department ain't like it.
Oh, I know, but, but. Not that much, I mean.
Department's the same way, dispatch is the same way.
Your job's the same.
Ours is, ours is the same way. Our guy the other day was, ain't even eighteen years old yet. Just cause I can't find nobody else working.
I'm in the same boat.
Maybe I can teach him something. Uh, I wonder something.
I hear you, I hear you. I don't, I don't, so it's, and that's a.
I'm shopping, Bill.
A problem. I got one, I might be able to help you out.
What is included in the book this year is to move three of our E M T to the paramedic pay scale.
Yeah.
So that we can, if we can find them, we can give them, uh, a little bit higher pay scale.
Yeah, I don't think she has any trouble getting E M Ts, it's, it's the paramedics, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and she's moving three, uh.
Of course, that's.
People paid at that level.
Yeah.
I mean, getting people is a problem, no doubt. I mean, we're all seeing, we're, we're all suffering from that right now.
All right, uh, I've covered everything that I was.
By the time missile gets over, it might not be two employees left.
What time you don't wanna break till tomorrow, Carrie?
For convenience for y'all, I'll figure it out.
One thing, we can't go more.
So they're inducing at eight? You wanna do it first thing in the morning so you can go be done?
Can do that if, if Ms. Allen's okay with that.
That's my recollection, is that you can reset.
You have the information hours.
Yeah, no more than that.
So one forty-five tomorrow.
Yeah, Ms. Allen, can you do morning?
Nine, ten o'clock tomorrow.
That, that give you enough time?
Yeah, I was just thinking we can get it over with and let her go to, to baby duty.
Right, yeah. Be here at eight, I mean.
Then they, then you get down, going.
It won't take long, I mean.
Okay, we're, we're gonna adjourn till eight o'clock in the morning?